We're going to call this meeting of the Board of Education order. If everybody can finalize for your pleasure allegiance, thanks for the day. I have pleasure allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Uh, Dr. Miss O'Neil, second from Dr. Francis. All right, I'd like to make a motion to move the Cardinal Stadium item up to, uh, up to the first item. Thank you. Can we get a second? Second from Ms. Raven. Any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of the motion to amend? All right, passes seven zero. Mr. Scher absent. All right, so before us, we have the amended, uh, meeting agenda. All those in favor? Seven zero unanimous. Uh, Mr. Scher absent. Yeah, still. All right, so the first item before us then is the Cardinal Stadium request. Just a little bit of background, we voted, uh, I think in December on our capital request. That went forward to the BET. The BET Budget Committee, uh, voted to reduce the request, uh, down. What they had asked us to do was to go back and do some work. Uh, that was the Cardinal Stadium Committee, feasibility committee actually went back working with KGMD, um, really rescoping the order, not changing the overall plan, as far as I can tell. Yes, I'm getting an nod. So it's really about reordering. Um, what needs to be done in year one? It was originally a two-year plan. It's now a three-year phased plan, uh, basically laying out over the three years. So that's in the document here. Um, what's been, what's a little different, uh, there's some money in here for the bleachers. Lori, you can probably give more detail, but money in here for the bleachers, with the home and away bleachers, uh, money for a press box, money to do some electrical work to wire up, uh, the stadium area, uh, also rental of temporary bathroom facilities. And those would be handicapped accessible bathroom facilities because we have none. Um, and then it would be money to continue the, um, the planning process in terms of building out the plans and getting it ready to go and ask for approval because we actually are basically out of funds to do that. And the more we keep asking for us to do, the less chance there is that we're ever going to, because we've got no money left in this project. Um, so basically we've come down to about 3.8 million dollars is the request before. So I will make a motion for that. Um, and then Lori, if you want to say something else, questions and all the rest of it. So what I'd like to do is move, uh, that we amend our appropriation for the, the capital appropriation for the Cardinal Stadium project to 3.8 million dollars, uh, and the phases are reflected in the document. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right, so Lori, I don't know if you want to add to what I've said.
Thank you. Um, I think at, at this point, um, as, as you mentioned, it's now a three-year project. Uh, and, um, the way it's been broken down to the first year will include, uh, the bleachers, but it also allows us to continue with the site design work, um, that gets us ready for the site plan application to the town. Um, and this would also allow us to do some, um, of the necessary sort of paving around, around the bleachers. Um, and then this, of course, as you mentioned, includes both home and away bleachers. Um, then as we move into phase two, we would focus on, um, moving the tennis courts and then allowing, having, having that space for the road, uh, to go through to, is it Route One? And then year three would be, um, the, the field house or the, uh, or the building be erected. Um, I have Russ Davidson here from KGND who, um, has brought with him a site plan photo or image or poster board that I think will help, um, kind of remind everybody about the project and just kind of outline, uh, what's going to be happening in each phase. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Russ.
Okay, so phase one, yellow is phase two, and dark blue is phase one. So while it was named as bleachers, thank you, I'm doing diesel. The, uh, it's a little more because you see we have to do these roads and parking area associated with bleachers. We're also doing a temporary toilet facility, which was specifically requested to be included in phase one. Um, and also included in this phase, which was not included in earlier iterations, is replacing the light fixtures only on the four light poles. So that's all in that 3.8. I would also point out, we talked about proceeding with the site plan phase where we had earlier thought that we needed to do that to get permission to start, uh, we needed to start the site plan phase to get permission to start with phase one. We actually have to complete a part of the site plan phase to get permission to even go with phase one because the additional space in the press box does count as floor area ratio. So you need a variance to even build the bleachers.
One thing I forgot to mention, so this was another question from the BET, and I think that the BET members that are here, um, was whether there was private money for this. So, uh, the GHS, the GAF, the Greenwich Athletic Fund, is actually committed to doing some fundraising. There's no hard and fast number, nor could we actually hold them to one, but there is actually that, that public-private partnership. Uh, and the other thing is asked about why we would do this, uh, as opposed to some other field projects somewhere else because of limited night use of this field. Uh, we had had that conversation and Russ, I think you were pretty clear, we were in the cafeteria at Central and remember this vividly. Uh, we use this stadium for our graduation, all sports, football, soccer, field hockey, uh, boys and girls use this stadium. A lot of public use of this stadium, um, on the weekends as well as in the evenings sometimes. This is, it should be a showpiece for our town and unfortunately is not at this point.
I think also it's important to point out that it's, it's been called the Cardinal Stadium Project. A better title might be Greenwich High School Campus Redevelopment Project because it really does provide a second access to this campus, which is critical. It adds 74 parking spaces. It improves fire safety, uh, life safety, security, handicapped access. This is really not only the stadium. That's just the title of the project.
Ms. Dayton.
I think it's imperative that we move forward with the project, even if we have to stretch it over three years. Every student in our system will eventually benefit from Cardinal Stadium, even if they never run on that track or never play on the turf field, they are going to graduate from the stadium in good weather. So, and it's always good weather, always good weather. So it benefits every single one of our students. I just have a question for Russ, and I'm not trying to change the plan, but I'm wondering why the toilet rooms are not phase two, but instead are phase three because they are so critical.
Well, the toilet rooms are part of a larger building, so, um, phase three is the largest phase. It's about eight million dollars of capital. Um, and, you know, when we looked at all the different options, it was thought that that location was the best. Um, you know, one of the things that came up in this re, uh, sort of configuration of the project is why don't we just put toilet rooms under the bleachers and do it now? That was actually considered by the stadium committee and passed over as not a great location for them, especially since they're so far from the entrance and visitors would need to then come all the way around the stadium to get under them. Uh, you know, the, the, the best way to proceed would be to do everything and all at once, but the reality of funding, I think this is a very sensible, uh, phased implementation.
Ms. Raven.
Can you just recap, um, what was in the Board of, uh, the Board of Estimate Taxation's proposal for 1.3 million? Like what, what are we including in phase one in this request that wasn't considered in the, um, reduction?
Right, so our phase one was about 8.3?
Four.
Eight, four, sorry. Uh, and included obviously more work. The BET Budget Committee had in their head that the home bleachers, I think alone, were 1.3. That wouldn't cover even the cost of the design of those bleachers, the delivery of those bleachers, didn't take into account, uh, removal of the old bleachers. And then you have the, it's better to do both at once because there's a savings to that. It didn't account, I think, for the press box or any of the other site work that would need to happen around it, including footing. So that was, but we aren't really sure where that number came from. And they, but they did at that same point ask us to go back because they were unsure whether that was a real number or not a real number. And so we, we've come back to them. Missed out.
All right, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to follow the numbers. So when we went, I, so I pulled it out. So we went back to February 2018. We approved option B. That said 17.3 million. Then in our capital, in our budget book, it said that we were pursuing design work on option B of 21.3 million. Okay, so I'm somehow foreminded that maybe that was lights, I'm not sure. But then the project estimated overall budget has been reduced to 17.8 following reduction in the size of the building, removal of the lights, and replacement of scoreboard and speaker system funded by the generous donations to the Greenwich Athletic Foundation. Okay, so that makes sense. So we're at 17.8 without lights and now, because we've taken out the scoreboard, great. But now we're back at, is it 20.2, 18.7 because we're adding lights and with escalation? I'm just trying to follow.
Lights, temporary toilets, escalation are the big.
And by phasing it this way, there's an additional cost to that. And the BET is aware of that. We've had that discussion.
Yeah, I mean, the colors are a little simplistic, but basically you're going to do some site work in some areas, then you're going to come back in a later phase and redo site work in that phase because the whole idea of a phased plan is you have to remain in use all the time. So you can't leave things fenced off as a construction zone. So there's, there's a, about a quarter million dollar of trade cost alone to redoing site work.
Okay, so can I ask a final question?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, so in the two, so then if I just look at phase one, because that's obviously the BET sort of just focused on this year, um, the hard costs then in the 2.6 would be, like you said, press box, the elevator, the lights, all of that. What portion of that are the lights?
About 440, uh, base cost of four markups. That comes, I'm sorry, that comes from a Malone and Brune study from 2017, escalated to 2018, and then put in further escalation. So obviously that would be the subjective design. That number sounded a little high to us, but, uh, we'll work it out. But it's, you know, that was the budget that came from that study for LED fixtures only.
And just, I'll, I'll point out, there may also be private money out there for the lights. Uh, the lights obviously would have to comply with the existing agreement, um, in terms of everything that's laid out in it, but this is to modernize. Uh, I think the last time Dan spoke about it, I think finding bulbs for the existing fixtures is, is becoming hard. Mr. Edison's been dead a while.
Right. Ask the answer.
Wait, Dr. Francis will come back to you.
I kind of wanted to back up to understand, at least to the best of your understanding, or I don't know what you want. What, what was the goal of the BET asking us to change this? Because I have to admit, I'm a little nervous that, that we're just going to get phase one and then the rest is not going to happen. Um, and part of what I had heard was that part of the issue was getting to Route One, but it looks like for this phase one that we have here, you have to have access to Route One the way you're setting up that parking area. So I, I just would better like to understand that.
So, so let me start with the Route One. That access thing actually exists today. Um, what you would need in order to fully use that exit, because if you see, uh, there's a road that runs all the way across phase two that would exit out, uh, would likely be a right turn and right turn up only. Um, you basically would need state approval to do it because it's a state road, not a Greenwich road. And so at this point.
You don't need that for the parking lot?
You don't, well, you, you need that road there right now. The only time it's used is to bring an ambulance in, uh, for sporting events. That's the only time they ever actually open up the gate to let a vehicle in. And then fire trucks as well. Food, oh, food trucks for that. Sporting events, who knew? Okay, so we'd have to wait basically until we had state approval to open that up as an access road. And then there, there'll probably be discussions with the state about whether that's a use for pickup and drop off at the school, only open for events. And, you know, there might be limitations, who knows what the state would impose. Um, in terms of, I'm sorry, the first part of your question was about doing it in phases. Yes, I have exactly the same fear that you have, but at the end of the day, we know that these bleachers need to be replaced. They're from 1970, I'm from 1970. They've been shored up. Uh, I've been shored up as best I can, but those bleachers are, are not going to last. They need to go. So even if there's a point in time, we don't do it now, we do it later, whatever that later is, we still have to replace those bleachers. So I am concerned that that work get done. Um, if it doesn't get done now, it's never going to get done. And basically we're going to end up at a graduation where there's no bleachers. That's going to be problematic.
Um, I guess this also brings me back to one of the points I brought up when we were having our joint meeting, um, with a consultant about our capital projects. And if, if this gets substantially reduced, it sort of brings me back to that issue of how much time and effort so many people has gone into this. And if, and if this is sort of a back way of not making it happen, I just feel like we need to figure out as a town a better way to use our resources because, you know, it's, it's crazy to have spent this much time creating a whole plan to then sort of have it fizzle and then only do a small piece of it. And by the way, if we can't use that entrance to Route One, we're not committing to that, well then what are we doing with all those parking spaces and with that work? So I, that's still a little confusing to me. If that's really considered to be a concern, then, then the phase one that we have here is in question too. So I.
Well, I don't think the phase one is in question because you still frankly need to do paving there when you put the bleachers in. But, but at the end of the day, uh, what's included in this money, I believe is money to go forward and continue talking to the state about getting the approval.
That's right. The site plan approval is included in phase one, so the access to Route One will be settled as part of that process.
And that would obviously hopefully be done by the time we get to needing a request phase two.
And what is, what is substantially, I don't know. What is substantially different about this that we think is going to make the BET happier other than allowing the project to be stopped after phase one?
Uh, it's the spending less money in year one and spreading the money out over more years, which it's a dollar issue. It's not about the, I don't think the discussion at the BET, and I'll, I'll watch Karen and Tony's heads on this, I don't think the discussion's been about a need or a want for the town. I think it really is about money management, and that's a larger issue that our board, I think, ought to not weigh into.
Actually, I'd like to weigh into that.
Well, but I'm gonna, Jennifer, go ahead.
Well, or Kathleen.
We are fiscally responsible elected officials. What this paper says is that there's a nine million dollar escalation. Is that correct?
I don't know. 7.2. Just two, three words.
We can do that, one plus four plus.
Yeah, I think you're 2.4 in one scenario and less in the other. Um, we're recommending that you, you use the total budget, which is what you're using. It's around two and a half million dollars of cost escalation, some of which is unavoidable. It's the third year that has been added to this. So the first two years were going to happen anyway. The, the awkward part is the most expensive phase is phase three, so, uh, that's where a lot of the cost escalation goes.
So if you can help me with this, on the document that shows the chart, the second to the last column, which is called total revised for 2% escalation not recommended.
We use, uh, we use a 6% escalation, which is the next column over, uh, which I believe is the number, the total budget for the phase rounded. Um, you know, there's been a bunch of talk about cost escalation and apparently the BET uses 2%. It's tied to some consumer price, some version of the consumer price index. Our firm, uh, doesn't use consumer price index for construction. We use construction cost indices. Uh, they're published by people like RS Means, Turner Construction, Engineering News Record. And construction costs don't track very well with CPI. So we're just very concerned that we want you to be able to deliver what you told the public they were going to get. And, you know, three or four different points different in cost escalation in three years for an eight million dollar phase is a lot of money. And if you don't budget for it correctly, it means you get 8% or 10% less building. Um, or 8 or 10% cheaper building, which is not a good investment. Uh, so we try to be a little conservative with cost estimating, and you'll find different people with different views on it, but that was our recommendation.
So basically we're stretching the project over time and we're paying more money to get this same project done.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Raven.
I don't almost even want to bring this up, but I'm thinking about Hamilton Avenue, where we thought we were just going to like level out the lumps and bumps, and now there's all soil business. So any, what's the plan B for coming across any soil contamination issues with this?
Well, the early indications of tests done in this area that there was not problems
in this portion of the site. That being said, we still have to do test forings and that the budgets do include a 10% design contingency and a 10% construction contingency for the things that we don't know about.
Ms. Doe.
Just regarding, I guess this is a polydium, Peter, on the Greenwich Athletic Foundation, I know they can't make a commitment, but just tell me, if they did come up with a certain amount of money, are we suggesting then that the BET will then decide to reallocate the money in a certain way, or what is the plan?
No, the way that this works, um, and the Byron Pool is actually a very good example of it. The Junior League had a set amount of money they were going to, to donate. What the BET does is they actually have to allocate the full amount to the project, uh, but basically that money comes back into the town's general fund.
Okay, so we'll be specific to, okay.
Right. And of course, you know, given where we are, given that the thing has been moving, it's kind of hard to pin that outside group down and say, hey, are you going, how much are you going to donate? So once it's more certain, I think they'll, it'll be a little easier for them to go out and solicit.
Okay, thanks, wow.
Sure.
Totally different. On the, so just I understand the soft costs is a combination of obviously all the A and E and then the site design work as well that you mentioned?
Yeah, the project costs are A and E fees, attorney fees, surveys, uh, the test forings, soil tests. It's all the non-contracting costs. It's only an allowance. If you don't use it, you can return it. But again, um, you've had a history of budgeting fees separate from construction, and it's more typical that you actually budget project by project inclusive of everything it takes for an individual project to get done, and that's how this has been presented.
That's actually a change in our overall capital request too. If you remember, we used to just buckets of A and E money, but it, we've taken your advice and moved forward that way.
Yeah.
That's how most municipalities and universities do it.
We like best practice. Thank you. All right, any other discussion on this topic? All right, if not, all those in favor of the motion to amend our Cardinal Field Capital item to reflect the 3.8 million dollars in the items that are in the, in the sheet? All right, at six, all those opposed, all abstentions. So it passes six zero one. Mr. Scher absent. Thank you. We appreciate the BET members coming, and I guess we'll be before the Budget Committee on Tuesday with this. Back at it. I don't know if you guys validate parking, but we come a lot. All right, with that, we are going to move into our Cape Lighthouse Training Program, and I'll turn it over to Nick, if we're coming back and being patient with us.
Okay, so, um, when I got here tonight, I talked to Mr. Mayo and Bernstein, and given the conversation that's going to take place at the second, at the second part of the meeting, um, kind of made an executive decision at the last second to switch up what I was going to do tonight. So I'm part of, I'm going to be testing myself to see how well I know this stuff because I planned on doing the other part, but it'll make more sense for the work you're going to be doing later this evening. I think it makes a, it'll, it'll be some tools that you will find are helpful to moving forward. So, um, I'm going to start with very quickly reminding ourselves where we started, um, going back to our sticky notes and the progress we hope to see as we go along. Very quickly, um, I just want, because we spent a couple sessions on our first module, and I just want to maybe capture some of what you remember that made a difference. Help me understand what stuck and maybe what didn't. What did you learn that either helped you or perhaps confused you that much more? So we can use this to regenerate what we're going to talk about tonight.
Well, I was thinking that, I think what's still stuck in my head most is from the first meeting, which was the concept of kids need to be able to read, to be able to progress, and the urgency of that and the need for that. And then the second one was sort of the sense of, okay, what can boards do and can boards want to make a difference? And I think that was kind of the, the second piece as I would say.
Well, you're white tonight, because we're going to talk a little bit about how you can make a difference.
It's very difficult to recall the content and which content was in which session. So could you give us a very brief overview of what you perceived to be the learning from the last module that we can use as a transition to this one?
Okay, well, I'd say first of all, the initial grab is to try to make sure people feel a sense of urgency. That, you know, we watch those videos and we see struggling readers and understand that, first of all, if they continue to struggle, then they're not going to succeed. But that we do get some information that shows that when interventions are put in place, that that can offset challenges and that kids can be brought back up. That school districts basically, if they are focused on the right work, can overcome perceptions of obstacles in some cases. Um, I'd say that's the primary thing that we're trying to accomplish with that is to say, you know, as, as sort of here, besides a sense of urgency, what happens if nothing changes? What, what happens to kids if nothing changes? And then is it possible for districts facing unique challenges or, uh, increasing challenges to overcome that? And I'm hoping that people saw some examples of, oh yeah, if we do our work properly, we can impact what happens in the schools. That's what I would hope.
So I absolutely think every single member of this board, even those not here today, have a sense of urgency, strong urgency. That's not an issue. What's, what's at stake if nothing changes is that through our wonderful local media, the public will begin to get the impression that nothing does change for student outcomes. They will not commit the funding necessary to improve student outcomes. That sets in place a spiral downward because without resources, there's very little you can do to really transform a district. So that's what's at stake.
I don't remember the equation, but you had something on the board about mission and, here you go, mission plan results equal trust. So I, that really resonated. I'm trying to even incorporate that into my day job. So somehow if we, as a board and administration, can do those three components of the equation, I think that's going to, um, go a long way, trusting each other, ourselves, and then, you know, maybe the public media and the, um, students and parents and staff that we serve.
It's funny, I just actually, um, the National School Board Traders have a, um, website where we share ideas. And I just shared that with that group yesterday and already had a bunch of people come back because trust is a big issue everywhere. And, um, and so we can't necessarily change personalities, but what we can do is make sure that the processes in place, the systems in place, sort of offset the potential for lack of trust. So if we have a clear vision, if you have that long-term plan, if there's a structural plan around it, so we know, you know, there's the strategic look, you know, we know what we want, there's the tactical plan, here's what we're doing to get there, and by the way, we get the results, we should have trust, and that includes your community supporting the schools. If that's diminished, or if we don't feel the tie enough, we start by looking at the structure we have in place and is there a clear vision? Do we all agree? If one of us says we have to improve literacy, do we all agree what that means? Because we could have nine interpretations of this is what improving literacy means. That won't get us to results because we'll be trying to solve nine different problems. So that's where the clear vision comes in. It's everybody kind of agreeing that this is what the job is, and sometimes it's easier if we narrow that so it's one or two things rather than a long plan with 187. I worked in Bridgeport once, where they had three sets of goals. One of them was 27 goals, one of them was, I think, 13, and then there was another One of them was 27 goals, one of them was, I think, 13, and then there was another set that was around 40. And they didn't even realize one of the sets existed till I had asked before the meeting, could you show me the goals, and they said, oh, we found these, we didn't even know they were there. I don't even know if they, I think the administration, the school administration may have put them together as part of their work, but there, and there was obviously no connection between those. So if we had done the first part of tonight as planned, we'd be talking more about that. So we'll talk about that, that's fine, in more detail.
So I'd like to just expand on your thought that there could be nine different versions of what does it mean to improve literacy? So if you have the strategic plan and you have the operational side of the plan, that seems to be not enough unless everyone agrees on how you will measure the results. Right? If you don't have the metrics, there could still be nine versions of improving literacy. Is that your understanding as well? Or as long as you have the plan and everyone agrees on the plan, you're okay?
We're going to talk about that tonight. Like I said, I think this could work out, I mean, after.
Well, I think it's probably an actual question, but basically, shouldn't you settle on the metrics before you walk down the path of saying, this is our plan? You get to settle on the goal, but you also have to have the metrics. This is what we want to do, how we're going to measure it, how we get there.
I guess I would argue it's kind of an organic process. I think that you start with the leadership team, you know, whether it's just the board, whether it's the central office staff working, whether the staff puts together a draft that then comes to the board, and then you review it, and then put your twist on it. You know, plans come in a bunch of different ways. One of the questions you're going to hear a little more detail on is, what's it going to look like if we do it well? So, and ultimately, I think that's where the board should be. You don't necessarily, I'm going to try to say, you wouldn't necessarily set, decide on the metrics as much as tell the administration, if this is what you're, if this is where we are, and you believe if we implement certain plans, we will get from there to here, what do you expect to use as metrics? But tell me upfront, before I say yes on anything, before I vote on it, I'm going to ask you, what would the metrics look like, when would we get reports? How will we know that if in fact there's issues that we're not getting where we thought we were? How, what's the feedback move, so that we know that we're taking what we learned and modifying instructions so that it gets better? I don't see that necessarily as a board job, as much as you're the sounding board, but you asked a good questions, and, okay, convince me that the plan you've got is going to, one, do what we said it's going to do, and you've got strategies in place, or you have a plan in place, that will keep us informed as we go along, so we will know in fact that we're getting where we said we were going to go. So, does that, okay. Okay, well, I think you got the gist of what we hoped you would. I mean, you know, hopefully, some of these things will become more obvious as we go along. I was going to start tonight talking about the conditions that exist in high achieving districts. But again, the second part, which goes into the board's role in all this, I think is going to be more helpful to the work you want to do. So I'm going to switch up a little bit. So the Lighthouse Research really identified two, three sets of data that really impacted the board's work in student achievement. The first one are the conditions, and again, we'll talk about them more next time. There was also the belief system that exists in high achieving districts. That will be part of what we can do next time as well, I believe. But then, the third thing, and in my mind, the most practical, was the work they did in discovering the board's role in all this. What do boards do that will help us get where we want to go? And tonight, for tonight, the purposes of tonight, in your packet, there's a bunch of stuff, but you really only need these two documents. There's the one that says the role of the board for improving student learning, and the other's this little organization organizer, we call it a five-column organizer. It should, it should be in the folder. Rest of the stuff, if you want, just put it in your binder on your tab too for later, because this is technically for the second module. You can hang on to it, but for tonight, the purposes of tonight, these are the only two things we're going to hear. This is folded up inside. That's the fun stuff we'll do the next time. So that's, yeah, those are the two right there. So I'm going to start with sort of the idea that when we have a project, when we're doing work, that we want to have a plan in essence. And I wanted to just use sort of the metaphor of building a house to get us started. So if you're going to build a house, what do you need? What would you typically?
Plans.
Building plans, money plans.
You need a skilled workforce.
Skilled workforce.
You need to know like what type of houses, like what's the desired outcome?
The desired outcome, right. Which I guess could argue plans, because if we're going to have a set of blueprints, it'd have to match our expectations, but you need that conversation. What, what will we choose to, what will the choice be for the set of plans that we have? Yeah.
Supplies. Supplies.
Supplies, yeah. You've got most of them. So along the way, blueprints, a construction plan, which is sort of a little different. Having materials, checking the work daily isn't a bad thing. I'll talk about this in just a second. Communicating with your subcontractors, making sure, again, sort of a feedback room. And there's a learning curve, it takes time to do. Now, the reason I mention that is when I first came back up to Connecticut, we found a piece of land and we were going to build a house. And I went to my brother's wife's uncle, who was a builder, and I said, you want to build a house for us? He said, he built decent houses, it was going to be a starter house. And he goes, why don't you do it? You have all the skills to build a house. No, he goes, one, he gave me a construction plan, he gave, it was a big spreadsheet, and it had a column, first column was all the things you had to do to build a house, getting permits, getting a framer, getting materials, quotes, windows, doors, everything. When do you go for inspections? And so there was this big spreadsheet, and I just started filling stuff out. I got my subcontractors, contact information, calendar deadlines, all those kinds of things. Said, he had a set of blueprints, he gave me a set of blueprints. So we had blueprints, that was kind of easy. And again, it was a starter house, we weren't looking for anything fancy. He goes, the other advice I'll give you is show up every day when the crew is finishing up the day with a couple six-packs of beer, they will do everything for you. And it wasn't as much the idea that you're lubricating as much as you sat down with them at the end of the day and you talked, and they would tell you how the project was going and ask questions, and just establishing a relationship, which helped get the house built a little easier. Now, with all that, and I, and I planned, and I did everything, and what was kind of interesting is by following the plan and being rigid about following the structure, bought the land in August, broke ground in October, moved in in January. I mean, real tight, yeah, real tight timeline, and that was what.
You can't build a school that fast.
Well, I'll tell you, the guy next door was building two houses, and it took him a lot longer, even though he did a lot of the work himself. Now, it's not that we didn't have issues, but we finished, I think, about $1,500 over budget, which is nothing, and it worked out really well for us. And the other part of that was that we planned on staying in the house five years, sell it, and move up. We ended up staying in 25 years, because it just, the extra little attention, being on the job, you know, the guy doing the fireplace, you know, for another 500 bucks, we could do this instead. Okay, do it, you know, and so it worked out really well. Now, the reason I mention this is because at the same time, my brother inherited, went through his wife, a piece of property, and they wanted to, and this was a beautiful piece, a parcel of land, they had a pond in the back. And this gets to your original question, because they went out to dinner with her cousin, who was the son of the builder that I worked with, and they said, build us a house. He goes, what do you want? So they took an apple, and they drew a picture on the apple that said, build this. That was it, that was the plan. You knew things were not going to go well when, you know, we called, and we worked together at the time. He called me, says, the framing's going up, we've got to stop by the house and take a look at it. So, and that's kind of, you know, go back to the picture, when you start to visualize what it looks like. It's a really cool moment when a house is being built. And my brother's looking around, and he goes, where's the stairs to the basement? And the guy goes, there aren't any. He says, how much did he get in the basement? He goes, well, we didn't have any plans for stairs into the basement. And of course, my brother had a temper, he went ballistic, and he eventually got stairs. But that was the way the house got built. Chaos, you know, and he can't tell you what he paid for it, because he has no idea what his budget was. Just, I need an extra 500 bucks, I need an extra 10,000 bucks, whatever, he'd find it. The house got built in a year and a half, and they lived in it three years before they sold it, because it just didn't work out. And I guess the final pitch was, at Christmas time, they had the whole family there, because they wanted to celebrate their new house. And they had this beautiful kitchen, islands, marble, the whole bit. And sticking out of the ceiling, right in the middle of the kitchen, was a four-inch waistpipe from the toilet upstairs, came down into a fitting, went across the ceiling and into the wall. They spent a lot of money on this house, but there was no plans, no feedback, nothing. You'd have your choice when you're doing this kind of work. If we spend a little more time upfront on our planning, on our assessing, understanding what we're going to do for measuring to make sure we're doing things well, it's going to work out a lot better. And so, part of what we're going to talk about tonight is how boards can do that. And I'm hoping maybe you'll find this to be really practical. The research basically showed that there were four roles of the board. As you have the handout here, we'll refer to it from time to time. Setting clear expectations, holding the system accountable, creating conditions for success, creating public will, back to Jennifer's comments about we've got to have the public, very important. And then, as the Iowa team started working with their school districts in that initial pilot program to develop Lighthouse Training, they went back and the boards themselves said, it works better when we do this as a team, when we're learning this work, not individually, but that the board and the central office staff collectively get professional development together, that we learn all of this work at the same time. So that got built into the role of the board. And what we did was take it a little bit further and try to use it to be a model for how you do your work. So we're going to start with setting clear expectations. And of course, if we don't have expectations, or we have poor expectations, back to, if we have nine interpretations of what literacy means, we're not, we're not clear. And so the superintendent goes a little haywire, trying to figure out how do I satisfy nine people's impression of what the solutions are, rather than one. So the research showed that you have to have a shared vision, and it's not just the people at this table, but the, the people within the district have to understand it. That if your mission statement's tough in the schools, that your building staff understand what the mission is and how they relate to it, and all those things. This is also going to align nicely with the conditions we talked about the next time. But that we should, in our expectations, in our planning process, have that blueprint. It isn't just, we want to have better literacy, but we expect to see reading scores improved, we expect to see students, or maybe it's partially, we expect literacy to be taught in all areas, rather than just a reading teacher, but to actually require that reading be a priority in the entire district. That might be an expectation the board would want to be clear about. And that we want to have this sort of systemic effect. If, if we have one school with a problem, obviously, you have to focus attention on that particular school, but we don't want to lose sight of the big picture, that we have expectations on a systemic level. Now, in the handout, that's what all this stuff is. I'm not going to necessarily repeat it, you can certainly read it. But it's, these are the criteria that the Lighthouse Research found. If boards are doing this work, they're going to have a better chance of success. Being clear about the student needs, believing more is possible, belief is a very big, important part of this. Narrow focus, that we don't want to have a whole lot of initiatives, a whole lot, that if we broaden our expectations, we're not going to see the results we'd like to see. So how do we come down to maybe even one goal? What's the goal that's going to help the most kids be the most successful? And it's focusing on student learning and teaching. It's got to be about the convenience of the students. Are we doing work that's focused on the needs of the children, or are we focused on the convenience of the adults in the room? Because sometimes we make decisions based on, you know, this will be easier for the teachers, maybe easy, it's not the right word, but that we're not necessarily doing it harder, because it's going to be harder for staff, but it would have better results. So we maybe need to rethink that. Understanding that we may have to change some of the expectations to be fair. I mean, we don't want to just set impossible expectations to staff and then fault them if they don't do it. That there's got to be a process to get there. And then, yes, Jennifer.
The third bullet point, do you set targets at the end of the strategic plan for achieving what you hoped to set out with when you made your plan? Or do you set targets on an annual basis?
I think that there may be a little of both. I think within the strategic planning process, there should be some, I might say broader expectations. There's still targets, but they may not be so refined, and then there's sort of an annual set. And again, I don't know necessarily if the board would set them, other than maybe asking administration, tell us what we should expect. I mean, even the state of Connecticut does that, they have their SS, SSPs? Not the, the.
GAA now.
Yeah. So they, they have expectations too, but in terms of its growth, rather than just an achievement of a particular score. Part of that is the conversation I think the board wants to have around that is, if this is what the strategic plan has for the initiative, literacy for example, what, again, what are you going to, what would it be reasonable to expect with the proper effort, proper materials, resources? What would we expect to see for results? And a lot of that data is there. I mean, most districts aren't completely revamping curricula totally by themselves. They are involving materials or stuff that's out there in other venues. So there's a track record in a lot of this material as to how successful it is if it's taught with fidelity, because that's the other part. We can buy curriculum, we can create curriculum, but if there's no measurement of the adult behaviors to, is it being delivered with fidelity? Then we might have the world's greatest curriculum, but it's not working. So it's not just a matter of, and I think that's hopefully helping to answer the question, why do we want targets? Because we want to know that, in fact, it is being delivered with fidelity. So, yes, I think that you probably are more deliberate on expectations on an annual basis, because you'd want to refine down even further, what are we going to focus on? But I think even the strategic plan should have some broader expectations. And, Mr. Mayo, because you've been working on starting the new plan, correct?
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah, okay. So you're, that's right, you're, you're form of, anticipating and starting, yeah. But I think that's part of what the board can do as you're developing the new strategic plan, is to make sure that those questions get answered as the plan's going forward. What, what are we going to be looking at? Why this initiative, not another? And what's it going to look like if it's successful? How will we measure it? What happens if we're not doing well? What we don't want to do is create programs, and then because it's not working the way we thought it would, just drop it and start something new, but rather, how do we know? Is it, if it's a great program, but it's not being taught properly, then we have to do some professional development on the staff side to do that. If we're finding that the curriculum isn't aligned as well as we thought, that requires different work, but we should know that. And so the board should be asking those kinds of questions. Are we on target? If we're not, why not? Maybe we're doing better. What are we doing right that we should be sharing with the other teachers in the district? So that we know that every teacher's teaching the best they can. The other thing, we added, in Connecticut, the last one, the last bullet policy is, because we talked about boards having to do things through policy. And yet, they really didn't, in Lighthouse, they really didn't make the reference to policy all that well. So in each of these sections, we talked about the idea that within your policy manual, it's important that you have in policy. it's important that you have in policy somewhere those expectations. Maybe not, you know, but, you know, do you have a mission statement in your policy manual? Do you have your goals? Does a policy on instruction, for example, start out by saying, "The first purpose of instruction is to ensure that students learn what they're supposed to learn." Some, you know, policy two thousand, for example, might, and I have the numbers wrong, I'm sure, might say, "The purpose of instruction, the purpose of instruction is to make sure kids learn, students will be more tardy if they've missed so many classes." And a lot of policy manuals do that kind of stuff, whereas that number one policy in that section ought to really be an opportunity to reflect what does the board believe should happen with instruction? Or teaching and learning, or even finance. Purpose of finance is to ensure the success of the programming of the Greenwich Public Schools. So we'll talk a little bit about policies going along. Now this gets to, and when I do this for non-White House boards, we just sort of entitled this to five questions every school board member should ask. And we'll try to do it even for the convention this year, because it was a big year last year. But for each of these roles of the board, there's one big question that should be asked and answered every time we're going to make a decision. In this case, what are our greatest hopes? So, let's define what success looks like for this particular initiative. And it might be literacy, but it gets back to, what do we expect to see? But we want to make sure, we want to drill down, make sure we reach the new parts. Now, I worked in the district a few years ago where they wanted all-day kindergarten. That was the issue. They'd been fighting, literally fighting for five years to get all-day kindergarten in place. And it kept failing. And so, the, they asked me to come in and first facilitate a workshop with all the administrators. They had twenty-seven of them. They came up with five, and we'll call them goals, we called them need statements, because the board was going to take those need statements and then they were going to use them as a framework for goals. And so we started out and I said, "Today, we're not going to talk about solutions. We are only going to talk about, try to identify the root cause, problems. So what's, what are you facing?" And somebody raised a hand and said, "All-day kindergarten." "All-day kindergarten is a solution, what's the problem?" "Well, we need time." "Well, time is a solution, what's the problem?" We spent about an hour drilling down. And out of that, everybody in the room agreed literacy and numeracy were the problem. Children need better math skills and they have to read better and write better. So, that opened up a whole lot of additional solutions for the board, because when it was, when the focus was on all-day kindergarten, it was either yes or no. But when the problem became literacy and numeracy, and everybody went into, "We're here to solve that problem, not add to our budget," all of a sudden, they were initiating programs that weren't all-day kindergarten, but did help improve literacy and numeracy. And in fact, two years later, there was such a movement to improve that, that they did adopt all-day kindergarten, because they had focused on the need question, rather than the solution. So, we recommend, and we've actually, you know, some boards will admit these things and actually pull it out when they're, when they're looking at issues. And I've had boards come back after we've done this training, and they said, "You wouldn't believe it, last month, we had a meeting and we used it and it helped." In fact, Westbrook was, they had been asked by their town fathers to consider sharing the finance office. And they actually got this out and said, "Let's figure out if this will help us make a decision." And it, it helped them enough to say to the town, "Thanks very much, but no thanks." And they credited this with helping them do that. So, we'll sort of go through the questions as we talk about the role. And hopefully, as you're thinking about this, I mean, I see potentially, whenever, the right kind of decision, you don't need this for every kind of decision, but if it's a new initiative, if it's a new program, it doesn't hurt to pop this out and ask the questions, or even administration knowing that these are the questions the board is always going to have in front of them, to think about answering them right upfront when they're making the proposal. Here's what we believe needs to be done, here's how we're going to do it, et cetera. So now, we're going to talk about creating conditions for success. The board has an important role. In fact, I'm sorry, I misspoke, because there's one more document we have to look at. There's a piece of paper here that says reciprocity of accountability. Got another picture of White House on it. It's, it's good reading, I'm, I'm just going to sort of paraphrase. Well, you know what, take five minutes, take five, because it's really helpful to, to read this through in terms of what your role is in all this, and what your staff's role in all this. Take a couple minutes, please read this. Anybody see any great within this? Or not?
A little dated. Very dated.
Yeah, nineteen ninety-seven.
No, I'm saying the concept is dated. It, it, it was a subject when there was no data. So this doesn't have to be about boards of education, this is about boards of education, education. You know, this could have been about an organization when there was this reciprocity of data, but we're in a totally different place now. Just as a society, so it doesn't have a single.
It might, well, other contexts. I'm not sure I agree, but it's a good observation, thank you.
I mean, it's simply, it's distributed literacy, it's roles of responsibility. Right, if I'm going to tell you to go do something, you need to make sure you have clear instruction and that the path for you to do that.
I think, I think, in my mind, the big takeaway is that it's not just requiring, it's empowering. That if we just set, it's not just a matter of authority, it's about making sure that people are doing the right work and feel supported, are supported. That we can't just say, "Teach math better." And then, if math scores don't go up, we've got a problem. What did you need from us? Others are superintendent, yet the resources he needs to do the things. I agree about data.
Is that what that says? I thought what it says is it was talking about, different people have different measurements, they have different measurements from where they're sitting. The board has strategic measurements, the management has administration. I want to say board management, they are management. They have, they have.
I don't think that's the one.
Hey, you're wrong, you better check.
It says reciprocity of accountability, and it's talking about, if you don't work both sides of that, then you don't have an effective accountability system. Isn't that what it's saying? No?
Yeah, but, yeah, I, I mean, I hadn't really interpreted it that way.
It was talking about the board can, because of its legal authority, can kind of, which is always true, the guy, you know, the, whoever's, the person who's on the top of that pyramid, puts your position, is going to have some authority. But if you don't get that balance right, then it doesn't work.
Right. See, I'm not sure, I, in terms of, do we know more than we used to? Yes, but in some systems, that's, that isn't functioning the way it should. And this is where I think the board needs to understand its role in this, is to empower these things to be done. And that they've got a reciprocal obligation of setting those high expectations, setting the metrics, setting the, the standards or whatever, as you see them. But then also to say, in order to be successful, we're not just going to blame everybody else if it doesn't work. What do we have to do in order for it to be successful?
But it also says you can't set, somebody, one side of this equation cannot set objectives. Without, a look, is it doable, is it measurable? Can you execute it? Because otherwise, it's fantasy.
Well, isn't it also talking about setting the conditions? To allow you to be able to do it.
Right.
So if you're setting those conditions, then you are going to have that distributed leadership. You are going to make those conditions possible, you are going to get those opportunities, and you are going to do the same thing that you're expecting other people to do.
Right.
So, you're setting the conditions for success.
Yeah.
So what are those conditions?
And that's, depending on what you're trying to do, is what you have to articulate. But the, in so many cases, the boards, and sometimes it's, it's other leaders within the district, just set the expectation and that's it, you know, good luck. And yes,
It doesn't work.
Well, it doesn't work. And yet, there are school districts, I mean, maybe part of the problem is that you're looking at it through the lens here and you're not doing that. And a lot of boards don't, but there are boards that do it. And that's why they need to understand this.
That's why I think that setting annual targets would be more effective than our five-year target, or whatever the end of the strategic plan is. Because it gives us a chance to help the administration, for the administration to help the board, understand where we are, where we should be going. I think our current plan is great, but the targets are too far out in the future.
I would agree with that.
I think I would say that's slightly modified, which is there are some things that are hard to completely change in a year. So I think there's a sense of where are you going long-term, but what are things that you look at along the way that might be intermediary steps? We can sort of talk about subtitles or other things that might help you get there. So, I, I, I think it may not always be completely one or the other, because there are some things that I think might be multi-year that are hard to expand.
But I think within that, understanding that this is a long-term goal, that each year, there needs to be a certain level of expectation to make sure that we're still on track.
Sure, of course, of course.
Yeah.
But I, I disagree with what Jennifer's saying. If you're an organization and you're living in a strategic level, and you don't have a, what we used to call a behead, a big hairy-ass goal, you don't know where you're trying to get the organization to go, then, nobody, okay, we're, we're going here next year. Everybody knows, you don't move the needle, you rarely move the needle in education in twelve months. So, just to plan next year is, it's, it's not a, it's an amorphous goal. Like in our plan, we normally, most organizations today, nobody does five years. Most organizations do three.
Yeah.
Okay? But, in our discussion as a board, nobody wanted to do three. Because they go, "Well, we're going to do this big giant thing of digital learning-based, personalized learning, we're going to make this big transformation, and it's all these kids in schools and programs and curriculums and devices and blah, 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 blah." Let's make it five years. So let's say, you want to be here in five years. That sounded right at the time. So I don't know that I would say, "Oh, well, let's not have one, let's just look at the next twelve months and see what happens." That one doesn't make sense.
But I don't think I heard Jennifer say that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think these things are mutually. They're not. I think you're right, set the big target, that this is our big goal. But I think, I think what I'm hearing Jennifer and Nick say is, check points, right? Every year, it's, let's ratchet up to get closer to the big goal. We, we've tried this before, you knew it better than I do.
You need both.
Yeah.
You need both. But in a, in a strategic setting, you set a long-term goal. In an operational setting, you say, "How'd you do?" Right? Like I don't, right. To me, a year goal in an education strategic plan is a warning signal. It's not a target. It's a, "How are you doing?" "Oh, by the way, we're off." That's the most it tells you. You shouldn't beat somebody up because they didn't meet. That.
Well, I definitely agree that we don't look at it to find fault, but if we, if we have expectations on an annual basis and we're not reaching them,
Yeah.
then we're asking the question, "What do we need to do differently?" So I, I still see the relevance of having the targets, but not to find fault and say, "Oops, we failed."
Right.
So it's a continual process. So now we have three hands, you haven't said anything, I saw you for a shot.
Just that, I mean, I agree, I think you need to have short-term and long-term, but remember, remember also that we're human beings we're dealing with. So it's not like, you know, you know, sales or something, or reach this amount of money, but looking at whole children, certain things are not necessarily quantifiable, like social-emotional learning. Are we building trust? Are we, you know, are we providing avenues for students to, or, you know, are we helping them or harming them? And we won't see that necessarily right at the beginning, but there needs to be, that's, that's one component that you're not, I mean, you, there's standardized tests, such that they are, maybe we over-test. But they're standardized, like you can see those are black and white scores. But there are so many other parts of a, of a child, or, you know, the goal that we're shaping, that we can't just see based on, you know,
Well, there are districts that have that.
Long-term. No, I know, and there, but there's long-term. So, depending on what the goal is, you know, we're going to have to, I mean, depending on what area we're looking at, they're going to have to.
Well, that's why I think something like this could help us frame it, because we'll say, "What does it look like if it's done well? How are we going to know?" The question doesn't change, how it's, how the response is delivered may change, depending on the type of, you know, it, it might be a standardized session, right? That, in some ways, that's limited results. But there's still reasons why we need to look at those numbers. But if we only looked at those numbers, we're not helping the whole child, so I would agree. But there might be something in terms of social-emotional, for example, might be a goal, I'm surprised it wasn't, yeah. So, the question might be the same, how do we know we're doing it well and how are we going to know? But the response might be very different. Well, we have, you know, social, social psycho test, I'm trying to think of the word, but I know there's psycho, psycho-emotional testing or whatever, where we, or maybe it's through a social worker, if we have children that have been identified as having extra needs or whatever. That's part of your job as a board, is to say, "This is a priority, make sure we work on that" and provide the resources to be successful.
Well, and fidelity, like any accountability. Because this isn't just, this isn't just board necessarily, you also said it's, you know, fidelity, or, you know, that the teachers and the educators are, you know, administering it to the best of their ability.
Right.
Building that trust within the classroom, because some are and some probably aren't.
Right. And, yeah, we got to look at the adult behavior, so we should, that they're doing the work they have to do. And if not, it isn't like, oh, you better shape up or else, it's, all right. And that's where your administrators come in and your content specialist. "You seem to need a little extra help in this area, let's put a plan together, et cetera, et cetera." Okay.
I don't know if someone informed you that this board, with the help of the administration, I think in May, will be able to see all of our programs and our operations in terms of, I mean, fill in the right terminology. We're doing a program review, but it's more than a program review. It's where we see our strengths and weaknesses in each area, what are the student outcomes? What are the efficiencies we can achieve? So how do you, should that be the foundation of a new plan? That exercise? No. So, how do you link the exercise we're going to do in May to the beginning of the new plan in the fall?
It'd be hard for me to answer that, knowing, not having enough information on what is being done.
Yeah, I, I don't think that is.
Yeah. I heard you say the word dashboard. That was, what, typically what a district would do is pick the indicators they want to measure on a regular basis, build the dashboard, some are getting creative and actually putting something in electronically, but at least, you know, every month or a quarter or whatever, we're going to have an update on these particular items. And they don't have to be just test scores, they could be some of these other metrics that we find important. So, there should, but it should be agreed on, these are the indicators that we're all interested in, and then we're going to track those over time.
Well, it's not, we already have that.
Oh, we already have that. All right, so a lot of what we're talking about here, you may already have in place.
Yeah.
So it's just a question of not having to initiate it, which is what a lot of boards So it's just a question of not having to initiate it, which is what a lot of boards would have to do, but just recognize that there's a role of all this stuff in your decision-making. Sounds like, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse. If you guys are pretty good on this already, I just want to emphasize that the research shows that districts have to do that.
Don't confuse having it with using it effectively.
Okay.
Don't confuse those two.
Maybe that's a good, that's actually a good point.
Yeah.
That's where we need this.
Well, that's where the word fidelity comes in, is, okay, we've put the resources together to make this available. Part of the job then is to say, is this working the way it has to work? And if, you know, what, and if not, what do we need to do to make it happen? Is it getting the staff to understand it better, to put in the better input in data, whatever the case may be? But to me, the board finding a way of implementing that information into its decision-making starts with, we got to, we need to understand and trust the data we're seeing.
So, yeah, are we going through this, the strategic dashboard tonight?
Yeah, we're going to talk about the dashboard and the metrics tonight one more time.
Right, so, okay, I was just trying to remind everyone.
Okay, well, knowing that, maybe we can sidetrack some of this conversation a little bit. Because I want to make sure we hit this, because then we can tie it into what you're talking about.
Yeah. When we're talking about goals and the difference between long-term and short-term, I also think sometimes there's a tendency to say something simplistic like, okay, we want to reach 10% improvement in something, so over five years we need to go 2% each year. But I kind of think sometimes the intermediary goals might be, and this is completely making these things up, but we want to improve outcomes, but the first thing we need to do is make sure students are showing up to class. And the next thing we need to do is make sure teachers are in the class. And so that they're not necessarily immediately tied in terms of numerically to the final goal, but these are stepping stones that we think are really critical to getting there. And so sometimes those intermediary steps might not look exactly like the endpoint, but it's still getting you there.
Yeah, but Kate, Tom, the way, that's exactly what Anne was talking about, right? The board shouldn't care about, did the teachers show up? That's Ralph's job, understand that. But that's a condition for success, right? The board should say, your job is to educate kids in humanities, science, and such-and-such at this level, right? That's strategic. And then it's the administration, because we're not the experts, right? The administration has to say, has to, going back to Jennifer's point on strategy, the way it generally works in the rest of the world, is you say, I'd like to have these outcomes. And then you have the expert say, okay, in a dialogue, here's the ways we could do that, right? You could do it this way, you could do it that way, you could do it this way, you could do it that way. And then hopefully a consensus builds on, okay, we're going to do, we're going to make the bets, we're going to do it this way. Doesn't mean there weren't other options, but you got to pick one. And I would think what would be, and that's why I always get a little, coming back to the Lighthouse, I always get trouble in the conversations in the board, is because sometimes we don't stay where we need to stay. I've been in more meetings than I can count where someone's down saying, how many, you know, squares of toilet paper did we issue? And it's kind of like, you're trying to get underneath, is, you know, it's the old Jack Welsh measurement, is I keep pushing to see if it's soft or it's hard. And when it's hard, I stop pushing. But our board drifts into, occasionally, we drift into micromanagement when we do that, and we've stepped over a line when we do that. We need to have, we need to learn the discipline not to do that.
Or to call it when we see it and maybe step back a little bit.
Right, that's what I mean.
But I would say that I still think that what I was suggesting is that there might be intermediary steps. And what you said, which I agree with, is that that's where the experts come back and tell us, but then there's a conversation.
Yes.
And then we agree, okay, this is what we're expecting, and then that information still comes back to us to say, first year, whatever it was we decided on, we've done it, we've done it 90%, we haven't, here's how we're planning on changing that, so that it's a mutual work in terms of understanding that.
The best example of that process failing was No Child Left Behind. Because the goal of 14 years' house, we want every child to reach a certain level, was doable, I think. At least much of what they expected could have been done. But when they sat back and said, we're going to see this increment every year, districts lost sight of here. And I remember telling a couple of boards who were probably in a better position to do that than some of the others, if you forget about next year's test scores, and you forget about five years from now, and you just keep focusing on 14 years from now, you will get there no one else will. And of course, the, between making money contingent on doing those little things, nobody did that, and I understand why. But that was the reason a lot of this failed, was because they had the big vision, but they got tied up in the minutia, and it was destined to fail.
So I think I'm echoing what everyone else is saying, and I think I've been saying it, I guess I'm almost on the board three and a half years. We have the goal, it's longer range, but we need those, whatever you want to call them, milestones, key indicators, yeah, because nothing happens fast. So what concerns me, and I hope we're all on the same page, is we need to know along the journey where we're doing well or not doing well. Because we're not going to wait until we don't get there to figure out, oh, wow, we should have made a left turn somewhere.
Yeah. I was sitting in a district last fall, and one of the board members who's been on about 10 years said, you know, we did a reading program maybe five, six years ago, and whatever happened to that? And the superintendent said, you know, I'm not really sure. I think the principal stopped doing it. She wasn't happy with the results maybe three, four years ago, so they stopped doing it. And I'm sitting there like, if I were on the board, I would have been asking the follow-up questions. Because that, you know, why, why didn't we know? We implemented this because we believed there was expectations. We didn't build in our expectations of our annual progress report or whatever, so, you know, we don't want that. And I guess what I'm looking at is how can you sort of systematize the board's work so that that does not happen? And that's kind of hopefully some of what this will help you do.
Well, and I think the program inventory is going to help a long way towards that because we, we probably have a lot of residual tails in the district of things we've tried over time that may still exist that we weren't paying attention to.
But you bring up a good point. There's no, that principal wasn't held accountable for what he, for dropping that, whatever program it was. But that's the, and I think that's one of the issues that we have in our district right now, is we change leaders a lot, and it's not an excuse, it's just reality, and no one's holding people accountable. So now the board is trying to hold us accountable. So I think that once, once we stabilize and have a leader in place for multiple years, that'll, that'll happen. And that has to be in the plan as well, how you're holding people accountable.
And if you stay clear on your focus as a board, we're not changing our goals, we're, you know, the work isn't changing. We may change strategies, we may change parameters within that, maybe change the target a little bit every year, but we're not losing sight of what the work is, then once staff gets to recognize that, and then hopefully that starts to pull them into this. I think last time we talked a little bit about the credibility of leadership thing. I remember talking a little bit about that. And the more I'm working with that idea, the more I realize that your leadership has to have credibility too. You know, the building principals have to have credibility with staff so that if they're trying to implement something with fidelity, teachers understand, they really get it, they're part of this, I have to do it too. Versus compliance with mandates, which is very different than buying into, and that gets into, like I was saying before, one of the conditions that we'll talk about next time, which is where everybody buys into the mission, vision, and we're all on the same page. We'll get to that. Why don't we try to move this a little bit further so that way we can have the conversation about your goals? Again, you can read the part that's up here now, but basically it's, it's what are we going to do? I love the one state, of course. We are often ready to just throw something away and start something different. If we asked the right questions when we were bringing the proposal in and we had that conversation, what happens if it's not working the way we thought? What are we going to do? Some of that goes away. But the idea that we don't just keep trying something new is, especially if it's something challenging, because some people just like to wait stuff out. You know, I can think of many programs over the years, you know, we're just, you know what, the superintendent came with this new plan.
That's never happened.
Never?
No.
That's better than usual. But, you know, with this right now, the superintendent will change, or when something will change and the board will change over and we'll be on something new, so why invest ourselves in it?
But that's one of the reasons why you have a five-year strategic plan and not a five-minute strategic plan.
Yep.
Right? Which is, the plan is the plan is the plan. And while we do have turnover, we've experienced that, we still are moving in a direction now that turnover obviously slowed us down, I think, in a significant way.
Yeah.
But we still have the mission, vision values, we just don't have the execution and accountability.
And that works if you focus on it. And again, that gets back to systematically, is this part of our work? Because there are an awful lot of boards, my own board included, where we had a beautiful strategic plan. We've got a beautiful grant for Metna and they paid for it, and we had this great document, and we never did it because we didn't make it our work. So it's important to have it, but more importantly, to focus on it. So as we talk about the conditions, I think it's a fairly obvious question, what are we willing to support to ensure the expectations can be met? So what are we trying to do? What are we willing to do to make it happen? Because if, let's say, for instance, you worked on a new initiative, budget time comes out, and there's a number attached to it now, we need $3 million to do this, and, well, we really can't afford it. Well, maybe we should have an idea that when we're talking about implementing it, do we have any idea what it would cost to implement this plan? $3 million? Might be tough in this budget environment unless you can show the return is worth it, because it might be if every kid was going to read a couple grades levels higher, for example, maybe it would be. But that we want to make sure we have an understanding when we're looking at these things, what's the commitment we have to make? And are we willing to make a commitment? Accountability, we've been talking a lot about that already, so it shouldn't be that hard to understand that part of the role is to hold the system accountable. Again, we've talked, you've got metrics, you've got, you want to talk about setting annual targets, strategic planning targets, talking about things like inequities, how do we assess progress? All of those different questions should be asked and answered all the time. I mean, that's, in my mind, should be the meat of school board meetings, is how are we doing? What's going on in the schools? What's being taught? How are kids learning? And less operational decision-making, but really into the big picture as much as we And I think we've talked about this in a couple of different ways. The purpose of all this isn't to place blame on anybody. It's, we don't talk about it, we will never fix it. I was in a district a couple of days ago, and the superintendent's, she just took over recently, and she says, and it's a high-flying district, she says, there's so many dysfunctional things going on in this district right now. Special education is a mess. We're not complying with a lot of things here. We're not doing this, stuff's not getting done here, here, here. We have no written curriculum, no written curriculum. And do you tell the board that? Oh, not yet. We're afraid that it's too much, too soon. Well, we can fix it if we don't know it. But they don't have yet an environment where she would be comfortable coming in and saying, I got a list, guys, this is all the stuff we're going to have to do if we ever want to focus on student achievement. So it's going to take time to develop that level of trust with the board to say, you know, I want you, you need to know this. I mean, worked in a district that traditionally had been a very under-achieving district, and we brought out the data for them and showed them their student data, and they were like, they had the largest achievement gap in the state. And theoretically, Connecticut has the widest achievement gap in the country, so one could argue, at least on one level, simply that they had the worst achievement gap in the country. And one board member said, I've been on this board 20 years, why didn't I know this? That's a really important question to ask, you know, so you should know that, and you should be, you don't focus on the bad news, you don't do it to the exclusion of everything else, but we don't fix it if we don't talk about it.
Are you aware of any district, doesn't have to be in Connecticut, that reviews progress more rapidly than the annual target? Is there any real-time information system or any kind of other way to track progress without generating work for the administration? Something that is a screen the board looks at once in a while? And then the discussions are more targeted, more narrow, on how can we improve this particular small set?
Yeah. I know Vernon, two years ago I worked with the board when they came up with the five to 10 things they wanted on their dashboard. And the superintendent was going to work with the staff to come back, I believe it's been implemented, I haven't seen the finished product. But they wanted to automate, so those, I think they came up with 10. Originally, he was very ambitious, I want to do 20. And it was like, 20 isn't going to work, you know, you want, in fact, 10's a lot. But it included things like high school graduation rate. It wasn't all just test scores.
But that's another annual, that's another annual.
But they, but there were some metrics that they, like reading scores and such, that they were updated regularly, I would say monthly. That's an example, but I don't have a lot of them, I know it's being done. I know it's being done. And it's a good way to do that.
There are, I've seen them.
I've seen them too. I just wondered if any district.
There are dashboards.
Yeah.
But, and they go all the way down to what you're talking about, which are deep operational metrics as indicators to potential outcome. They exist, but, I mean, we got to figure out if we would want one. Because what that really gets into is it's essentially monitoring on a weekly basis what all schools and teachers and principals are doing. And then we'd have to ask ourselves, is that the kind of, would we want to make the kind of investment to give visibility to that? I would think the administration would want that for themselves, and I've always been puzzled that, I've always been puzzled that a superintendent hasn't come to us and said, I need $500,000 to go do one of these and connect all these IT systems. But they did, they never did. I never got that part, but, you know, that's management. So that's up to the super to say they want or need that.
And there's different levels of need to know. Like, I've served on the board for the Connecticut Academy for Math, Science, and Technology, and that, one of our projects was to develop a data system that could be used to have real-time analysis of at the teacher, student level, teacher level, but more importantly, as we were building it, we were looking at, what are the questions, what's the data a board would need as a policymaking board, which is going to be different than the detail that a teacher might need or a principal might need. Principal needs to know what's happening in the classrooms, a school board member does not.
We did both levels, you never connected.
Yeah. And it's hard, because there are systems in place, but I don't know that any is that sophisticated that it's got all the answers yet. I think there's, it's a target, and it just keeps changing and moving. But it's better than it was, there's more data available than there used to be, but we're not where we need to be yet, I don't think.
But it comes back to who's the data for and what's the purpose of it.
Right.
So we're going to talk later about a dashboard we developed. It's a lot of static data. I've never found it to be useful for a lot of what we do, and that's, I think, why we're continuing to discuss it tonight. But I don't ever feel that that was what was needed for principals in the buildings and people in the administration to actually make real rapid decisions and move things forward. So it's the, who's using it, what purpose, you know, what's the investment in it, and is there going to be actually payoff from that?
And, but if, you know, it gets, for example, if individualized instruction is a plan, teachers have to be able to use this stuff because they have to modify and adjust their instructions, really, as they're getting the results. And so there's, it has to be a time to the data for that to be needed for.
That's what I'm going to talk about.
That's still a common. All right, so.
Aspiration.
And my favorite question when we are going through a process, I really love the question, what will we accept as evidence? So ask, and I always think this question should be asked before we vote yes or no on something. We want to know before we approve it. How are we going to know? And I would even.
This is the part where you say smart gold.
Exactly.
This is the part where you say that.
Part of it has to do with that, but it's not, it's, but it's beyond that because it's like, at least once a year, are we going to get an update? Or is it, does it require twice a year? Does it require monthly? There might be some.
Is it a 50-page document that, you know, your staff for time and.
Swinging through looking for.
And remembering that that data that you have to pull together also puts a strain on staff.
Absolutely.
You don't want staff sitting around, you want them doing the work they're supposed to be doing, not building reports. But that's got to be part of that give and take of what are you willing to provide in order to be successful? And part of that might be if we want quarterly reports or monthly reports or annual reports, I may need to be told, well, in order to do that, we need a data set.
But Nick, this to me doesn't say anything about reports. See, that's, that's, I think, where we go off the rails, right? Everybody go, oh, no, if I'm, if I'm going to deploy a strategy towards an outcome, right? That's fine, pick it. But it has to be in the culture of the whole organization, everybody. Has to be a cultural norm that says, guys, we're going to run on evidence. And evidence could be, you know, statistical data, it could, it doesn't, there's lots of ways to get evidence. Evidence doesn't automatically mean $3 million data warehouse with every, this is a problem. We always, it's weird. I'm really surprised about this in education. You see this. It's like people go from here to like over here. It's Olympic-style jumping. And I just would, you know, I'll tell this to members, I'm interested in clear evidence, right? Measurable evidence. But it doesn't need to be a science project. And I think we get, I think we get confused. We live in the extremes when we don't. We don't need to.
I buy that in a second. I agree with that. I think there is a place for both, but I think we are too dependent on the report and the full-blown, you know, I've seen, you know, a couple of districts that be at the meeting the night they're presenting the math, whatever it was, math test and math test scores, and it'd be a binder, just stick. And then say, this is a result, this is all the data we have. Nobody's going to read it. And nobody's going to learn anything from it.
Well, so we've tried several iterations of a standard report with a standard data set. So for humanities and math and all the rest. It varies, right? Every topic, it just seems like it changes. We've been through, I don't know. How many, how many of these, I mean, the people that have been on the board longest have probably seen.
I think it's always changes.
Right.
I stopped talking about it.
Yeah.
I just stopped talking about it.
And we get, and trust me, I mean, I, in the outside world, prepare things that go to a board of directors. They don't want it, we don't want it, we don't want to waste the staff's time. It's got to be useful for our discussion and it should also be useful for their thinking and planning. So how do we get to a place where we've all agreed, we thought we agreed and then it changed? We've all agreed, this is the standard data set, these are the types of analysis, you know, these are the five questions. So be, but what are the things we need to answer? And it's typically, we don't need a recitation of history for much of the programs, right?
That might be documented once lived somewhere. History doesn't change.
Right. But it's the, it's the, these were our goals for this year. This is where we are. These are our recommendations to go forward. And if there's an action for the board, like we will be back in the capital, in the budgeting process to ask for more resources. We're, we're dropping these resources and it's going to be savings. That would be great information. We get that occasionally. We had a great humanities report to close out, I think, last spring. And some of the reports have followed that format, but not all of them. And so it's trying to get, get to that point so that it's useful for all the players. Maybe we're using it differently, but.
Yeah, we, I don't know if I shared, we have something like that that we developed with Iowa and similar. It's like seven questions and, and obviously the board can pick and choose the ones they thought were most meaningful. But it's basically a presentation template. And it says, if you're going to talk about something, these are the questions we always want answered. And it sounds like you've got something similar. I guess the question is working with the superintendent.
With fidelity, I think, is the real.
That's our policy.
Right now it's our policy, so we're.
We're making.
Right. But I want to encourage that progress, right? That humanity report was excellent.
We modeled your STEM and, you know, and again, the calendar was developed with the previous superintendent. But we have the outline of the report through policy 618.
So you have to be a different place. And this is why I don't focus on templates anymore. Because templates turn people into mindless. I need, we need people to think. This is a problem with templates and people get so focused on filling out the template. I don't care about that. I'm interested in information. And coming back to this, I'm interested in information backed up by evidence, whatever the evidence may be. And for me, that would be, you know, if we could get that inculcated, you know, because our problem is in the absence of that being in our culture. All this other stuff are artifacts. They're not the disease, they're the symptoms. And we start treating the symptoms. So what do we do? We say, oh, I didn't see evidence. Well, could you give me, you know, what about this table? And what about that? And then before you know it, we have eight board members who are day of scientists. Okay, that's a really bad place to be and it's a bad place for the administration to be. I'd rather somebody walk in and say, to your form, I'm always going to ask these questions, right? These are always going to be the questions. Okay, if there's something in the organization that presents the board, they don't know what the questions are, okay, train them. But everybody's sitting around this table. Mary, Anne's new and she's been here three years.
Two and a half.
Okay, right? You've been here what, six now? What?
Six and a half.
Six and a half, almost seven years. You've been here how long? A long time?
Twenty-two.
Okay. So there's no mystery anymore. There's no mystery anymore. But we've got to get it, I think the more important part of this is in a culture descent, whatever the, don't come in, don't anybody come in, it's without, and I don't know. You wouldn't stand for not having evidence when you go into a classroom or you go into a building. You wouldn't stand for that for 10 seconds, right? I presume you don't stand for it with your people. Likewise, you, presumably you. So we just have to make it a whole thing. That's the way we live.
Consistency is real important. Consistency. And that gets back to, maybe it isn't a template, but there's some critical questions. And if they don't present it, give the question in the presentation, somebody has to remind them, this is a question we always want answered, let me ask it. And maybe that helps. But I think you've got to be consistent in your expectations too. And that will help. I mean, I've had superintendents say, you know, I asked my principal to present on this and I'm shocked they did. My, my message to them would be, that should only happen once. You know, if they didn't follow the protocol, then they shouldn't come back to the board and present again until they voted with the protocol. But maybe that's oversimplistic, I don't know. If we're going to get the conversation going, because we still have two more. Building public will, will focus on this in another time as well, hopefully, where we have.
You've done a great job of that.
But the idea that communication isn't just informing, that it's involving and that in some places, boards have to do a little investment to make sure that communication is working properly. But the whole idea that public will is critical to anything happening. And it isn't just parents coming out to a parents' night or a PTO meeting. It's how do we get them out in the community talking about the public schools? How do we get other community members? We could spend, well, our module on community engagement is actually two sessions. So we'll talk about that down the road. But maybe one. But the idea that this is probably the most, if supplying the necessary resources is the most important activity the board has to do at meetings, the second most important thing or most important thing you do at other times is make sure that public will is being built. You are the public and the public schools. And so how do we communicate, make sure they understand the vision? Make sure they understand our plans. Make sure they even maybe know where the dashboard is if they're interested. You know, maybe it won't be, yeah.
Are we giving these slides?
Yes, yeah. And like I said before, most of that is on the scan out as well.
So James in PowerPoint.
I know, I really, really, truly.
So again, big, sort of the big hairy audacious question is, what do we need to gain community support? If you're going to do something like a school redistricting or.
Whiteboard, man.
But if you were, you know, start with, hey, we built a plan, any things that we have to take advantage of as part of our planning process, what do we need to do to make sure that land is come full and we have community support? So do we involve them earlier in the problem solving? Not the reaction to a solution that we've come in, but help us quantify the problem and try to resolve. Real important stuff. And so again, I think this is an important, New Canaan, I think, has a great process. At their board meetings, when they finish an item on their agenda, they voted for it, they're ready to go to the next thing. Before they do, usually it's the chairman's choices, okay, what's our talking point? And so, you know, and you don't need it on maybe a group minutes, but if you're approving a new program, you know, and I'm sure in most cases, the superintendent or somebody has framed out a sentence or two that can be modified or tweaked if you needed to. But basically, you know, the board saw a problem with math scores, literacy scores at a certain grade level or a certain particular skill, and we implemented this program to take care of it. Just an elevator speech, but the fact that they actually think about that and how are we going to communicate that to our public? And because they're at the meeting doing it together, there's an assumption there'll be sort of a consistent message out to the community after the time. Love that. I think that's just a phenomenal way of doing something simple, but it can actually help a lot. And finally, learning together as a board team, you know, you're doing that. You know, establishing time together to learn together, to work to each other. And I think the important part, when we're strapped for time, sometimes I talk too much and you don't get to talk as much as you should. But the idea that we want to continue a process of professional development for ourselves and we are a learning organization, so we should do that. So there are times when, again, the big question might be, okay, we're looking at this initiative. We're looking at this program. What more information do we need? What's something else that we have to learn in order to make sure this is successful? So that's, and if we go back to, it really kind of aligns with things like the blueprints, the plan, checking the work daily, communication, working, you know, making sure we communicate with everybody and the learning curve. So same components, it's just a different way of working with it. So I don't know how successful I was with this, considering it was kind of a last-minute shift. But I hope you got at least the concepts behind all this. I think there's a way of using this information to help you make decisions better. And speaks to the idea, I totally agree that the culture is important. Until we have a culture that changes how we make decisions or how we look at data or ask questions, we're not going to change anything. And I think that culture change starts here. So I'm going to break this part of it and ask you how you'd like to proceed here from here out in terms of tonight's work.
Well, we have scheduled for whenever we're done tonight, basically a discussion of our strategic plan metrics. We have that dashboard. There's been a lot of, I don't know, chatter. There are various points in our iteration of the strategic plan as to what those are, what we thought they were, what they've become. We've added in a couple of items that we're missing and I think that that's, that's the discussion we're going to have next. We have more time with you, hang on a second, I'm just pulling up, was my computer, it rolled. Lost my page. Yeah, we have a date with you in April and it sort of coincides with around when we were, we had a meeting down the road as well.
11th.
Yes, one second. Yeah, so we have you April 11th. We also have a date, May 30th, that had been scheduled up for self-evaluation. But at some point, we picked the can down the road on developing board goals. And I think, I don't know if you're free May 11th, maybe you want to join us for that. Maybe using that date, basically, once we're completed with you as an opportunity to develop our goals, because then we also need to turn that into, what are the goals for the incoming superintendent? And I think that until we have our goals in place, oh, it is a very good idea to be developing goals for a superintendent because they should be aligned. I'll line back to, by the way, the strategic plan.
So May 11th?
Um, May, May 30th, I'm sorry.
May 30th.
May 30th.
I think I'm good.
So we would work with you, our session would be April 11th and then we would come back, May 30th to do our, I think we could do the self-evaluation like we did last time, which is email out a form and then tabulate, ensure the results at that meeting and use that as part of our goals. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Nodding heads over here, Peter, so work. If you have thoughts, have a good time sharing them, we're all here.
No, I'm just saying, you know, you're talking dates and set the dates.
They're set dates or?
Yes, the dates are set, they're already.
I think you need, I think you need to develop your board goals sooner so that you can develop your goals for the incoming superintendent sooner than May 30th. Really do.
Well. The two things are different.
Yeah, I know the two things are different, completely different, but you need to have the goals for the incoming superintendent established.
Yeah, that's my point. I agree with you. That needs to be like lickety-split, which is, I agree with you on that. But that, my point is, I think those, you were talking about a schedule, Peter, which was the next steps in the scheduled meetings and what's going to happen, right?
Yeah.
And you were talking about, and we're.
And how are we going to use that time? How are we going to use that time, right?
So I hate to break, what kinds of do we, we have in our program, but if you needed to change the April 11th date to talk about those goals and then we swap out to May 30th for the next White House session. I mean, that's.
I wouldn't want to do that. Would you?
Well, in order to do the goals for the super sooner, we need to do our goals. There's got to be a line. It doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I understand.
Do we do both on the 11th or that's too aggressive?
Why not?
We're used to long meetings.
Well, not even long, but what?
Nick, how can we develop goals for our incoming superintendent without the superintendent?
You need to tell her what you need her to do in year one.
No, I don't think that's collaborative and I don't think that's going to be successful. And I think she should be in the room when we do that. And I also think we need strong facilitation on getting board goals because it didn't work at all when we tried this fall. And I hope you have a structured process to facilitate that, not just a conversation. Okay.
Well, we will talk a little bit about what the board goals, term board goals can mean a lot of things. So I really wanted to find exactly what this board means by that. We don't need to do that tonight. But when I come in prepared to do it, I want to know exactly what the deliverable is so that we make sure we don't waste anybody's time.
Okay, is the administration with us when we're establishing board goals?
I think it's important. Chief executive officer should be able to.
I mean, like, no, this whole setting, is this a setting?
This is, we need help here. So this is, this is like, this is like the silly merry-go-round we keep going on every time we discuss board goals. I think we need definitions here, okay? Because in some places, or when people say the word board goal, what they mean is goals for the organization.
Right.
In some places, people say board goals and they mean the stuff the board itself is going to do in the next year itself.
Right.
Okay, those are two totally different conversations.
That's why I said I really would want to have a clear definition of what the expectation is.
What I think you're hearing from some board members is they don't have this at all clear in their mind. So they may need some help to get it clear in their mind before they can give you the answer on what they want to work on.
See, Peter, I don't agree with you because the draft that we had was goals for our board for the year, not the organization. Our strategic plan is the goal for the organization.
Right.
So Mr. Mail had a great idea that we could just beg and plead and have our incoming superintendent join us one evening in your, in your dates that are already established.
Sure, try.
Yeah. I, I think there's a value to having her at the table, a big value. Just, not just for the inclusion, it's saying you're part of the team. But I, I mean, I would expect one of the biggest parts of the plan is to have and implement some sort of initial plan, you know, a startup, startup plan or whatever you would call it. I'd want to have sort of an explanation of their perception of what, within six months, this is what I plan on doing. Meet with teachers, meet with principals, whatever it is, have community get-togethers, develop.
That's it. Those are goals, those are, that's my point. That's what I'm saying to the superintendent. I mean, we're going to say, we're going to say to, I'll make this up, right? This is why I think the board can do this and candidly, Tony, I guess, could say yes or no. In year one, you're going to, she would naturally ask, okay, guys, it's your district, I'm coming in. What do you expect me to try to get done this year? That would be the first question a decent CEO would ask, would say, what would, and she may say, I don't think you can get all that done, or you can't. But it has to start with, you tell me what you think you want me to do, right? And then she's here, she's going to formulate her own opinion. But this idea of asking her opinion because she's had a couple of meetings down here is, or read our documents, is prob, it doesn't make sense to me. What does make sense to me is if we said, we want to get this initiatives thing done. We want to get our capital plan laid out. We want to get this audit thing and. we want to get our capital plan laid out, we want to get this audit thing and our facilities thing, big things, and say, Tony, in the next year, we'd like to see maybe these five things done, right?
So...
And then, and she would comment on that.
Yeah, so, because my concern was, you don't want to, you don't want to be totally separate from the strategic plan, but what I'm hearing is, these are more operational goals versus strategic goals.
Yeah, well, that's part of what I think the definition needs to be, what are, what does the board want to do? And I don't know whether doing it and around robin is necessarily the best way or not. I mean, it's your call, or is it something, I'm...
If we don't have, and my point is, if we don't have a clear idea, we can't, as groups, say, here's five things that are on our list and on our mind, for her to even comment on, then we're doing her no favors, right?
I have to say, I totally agree. I mean, we're the board, it should be what our vision is, what we want the strategic goal to be, and she is the CEO, she should be ready to execute it. I would love her opinion, but we have to be on the same page, frankly.
Well, you're right there.
And then it'd be nice if she agreed with us, but she should agree with us, because we're the board, so...
But she should also give feedback.
She can give feedback, but how, and if we're gonna accomplish, if we're gonna accomplish it, great, but we need to lose the conversation.
Yep, that's right.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
Lauren's making a very good point. That's exactly what we did with Sal.
Yeah.
And that's exactly what didn't work. That's exactly what didn't work. It never worked. It never worked, we've done it, done it, done it, and it has never worked.
But I disagree with you. We only, we have to decide it, but I think that the right thing to do is hear the voice, right?
Yeah, of course.
Because if there's no alignment...
I'm going the other way. I'm just, I'm just reacting to the, hey, Tony, you tell us what you, that's not the random approach.
But we need to know what our goals are as a board, in order to say to her, the 11th, right? We know our strategic plan next year is going to need to be re-upped, we are gonna have to look at that.
So that's a board goal.
That's a board goal, but it also is a superintendent, here's your job and here's your role in that process.
Yes, yes.
I think, I think I'm sort of coming into the middle, which is a combination, I think we're getting at, which is, we as a, we do need to try and find a relatively unified voice, but I don't, I don't like the idea of us sitting down in a meeting and it's absolutely written in stone and it can't be changed, because I think it's, I think it's an iteration.
I don't agree with you.
It's an iteration, we need to, I think, have some discussion where we're sort of starting to focus, then we have a conversation with her in terms of how do we refine that, what seems appropriate, what not, and then go from there. The part that I don't completely get is, I see our board goals for ourselves as possibly related, but probably also somewhat different.
Uh huh.
I don't necessarily see that as such a critical piece to getting to that next step. I mean, it kind of makes sense to do them together, but if, for example, we have a board goal is that we're gonna continue doing professional learning...
Lighthouse.
Lighthouse or other things.
Extended.
You know, we're gonna do more of that, you know, we're gonna work more on communicating to the public, that doesn't necessarily really key into what we're gonna be asking the superintendent to do, so I don't, I don't necessarily feel like that's, has to happen first, and then after, I don't see them as necessarily so tied to each other.
Well, it's a lady of the city.
But what I did hear was, at least from some of you, was, I'll use the term sense of urgency, that you want to have some information for the incoming superintendent, so they don't feel like they're walking in blind. Is that, whatever that looks like yet, we can figure out, but...
We made a, I think we made, I think we made a mistake with the last super. We let this happen. We said, she came in, rooted around in the district for a lot, 90 days before she arrived. We met with her, and we said, hey, here's some things we'd like to get done. And then we let her say, after she's rooted around ready for 90 days, I need another 90 days. And then she brought in goals after that 90 days, so effectively six months from the day she started, the day she met here, not started, but here, when we saw it. And a lot of it was not goals, accomplishment, it was activities. I'm gonna go meet everybody, I'm gonna go, and that's fine, because a new super needs to do all of that. Me as a board, I'm not really, I mean, that's your job, that's your job, you could just go do it.
That's a task, it's...
That's a task. It's not a goal, right? It's creating goals from tasks, it's weird. And, but if we have any expectations of, we want to get, we want Tony to get one thing accomplished, I don't care if it's one, three, or five things, I've got no value, but it should be, I would think, clear, hey, at the end of the year, we're gonna be saying, how well did it go, based upon these things got done, or they didn't get done.
So now what I did hear was, I think Peter talked about, obviously, the strategic plan is an important piece of what happens in the next year. Facilities plan, I think you said...
Facilities, I mean, Peter had the, Peter had the list, right? It's the capital procedures, the program review, master facilities plan, strategic plan, and then obviously that...
Yep.
Yeah, I think that sounds like too much. And then we also have to, because those are all, they have nothing to do with like academics and stuff.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what worries me about it.
Well, no, the program review is gonna give us like, sort of a dashboard, but we still have to execute on the last year of the current strategic plan, so we have a goal, academic goals, we have to...
Well, there's your job responsibilities, and then there's your goals, right? There's the stuff you show up to do every day, running the school district, right? Dealing with staff issues, that...
You're not gonna...
Probably blowing stone in.
Right, exactly, Rob, I'm so sorry. But that's basically, that's the job description, that's separate apart from the goals. The goals are, these are the big rocks that you need to move this year. That's what goals are.
And the board goals, I think in a perfect world, well, again, it could be strategic, I hate to use that word in this case, but sort of what does this board need to do to ensure the success of the strategic plan? But then, secondly, what does this board need to do operationally to ensure the success of what we're doing before, a little bit differently? So how do we change what we do versus how do we stay focused on what we are trying to accomplish? And so part of, what I'm trying to figure out is, if we sit down to write goals, what are they gonna look like? Is it more, we're, the five big issues facing the district this year are those five that you mentioned, and that maybe a part of it is prioritizing, right, you know, trying to figure out what's gonna be effective use of the new superintendent's time, your time, or are they all so critical, you gotta do them? Is there a possibility of stretching some out over a year or two? Probably gonna need to be. I don't know, I mean, that's, I can see that being part of the discussion, to come to that type of set of goals.
I mean, we just have to be careful of the, Kim said, but clear expectations and be concise and realistic, because I remember sitting on that side at a retreat, and there was like, the six, you know, situation change?
Oh, yeah.
I think we're in a...
It was my first, you know, I was on the Mac, that's...
Those were tasks and activities that were...
But it was sort of all...
But no, here's what, here's what we didn't do.
Incoming superintendent, superintendent that's coming in, and all of a sudden, we have something, maybe a sticky note, because we all have different ideas, so I think, I think it's important to get the goals clear and be able to, you know, say, this is what, this is what we plan to, this is what we want you to execute, what do you need from us in order to make that? I think it'd be a conversation, but I think it needs to, I think, I think our goals need to be set first, even if it wasn't a date, I think that, you know, I mean, absolutely buy-in and important, I think it's all, if she's here, she can make it, but...
But, Maureen, you made a good point.
They can't have a million sticky notes again, because...
Good planning is not about picking what to do, it's about deciding what you're not going to do.
We can't do that again.
Okay, and, because all the inertia is, oh, why don't we do this, why don't we do that, why don't we do this, why don't we do, no, if you're doing well, you've, that's why I never like more than three.
Right.
But it's an arbitrary number. But it's like, I'm where you are. That meeting was, it was an insane meeting, and I, I'll say this out loud, we need to get our act together as a board, because that meeting we were in, let's describe it, it was new people and what have you, but there was a big little bit of mommy look at me on the swing kind of thing, and everybody was throwing their thing in there, and this, the person we had on board, she's gone, gone, she said, oh, I'm gonna take all 47. I'm like, whoa. It was, it was, it was wild. But we have to have the discipline, we have to have the discipline not to fawn that off on a super.
Right.
We have to have the discipline, you use great words, concise, those are perfect words, because we gotta get our act together and not drop that off as a big problem on Tony.
I think of any of the planning retreats I've attended, rather than facilitated, and my biggest frustration is usually, you generate a whole bunch of ideas, you have the sticky notes all over the walls, and then you, okay, we're gonna come back and we'll do something with it, and we never did it. And so I think, to your point, I agree that part of that process has to be, when we leave tonight, we're gonna have three.
Well, that was our problem, is we failed to prioritize them, because everybody had different priorities, and everything was a priority.
Well, of course it is. So then we have to...
In our defense, I don't think we ever planned, sort of, it was sort of like an exercise we were given.
Right.
We gave all the stickies, and then we never went to the next step.
Right.
You know, and...
Yeah, well, that, it's, I, there's a lot of dynamics in that thing, but I think we should do, learn from it, do it together. Yeah, do it together.
And that's why you're gonna be here to help.
So why are we doing this?
It won't let you accomplish it.
So...
Without a dashboard, with our head...
So, is the feeling that maybe April 11th, we should work on this to get that started, and then the 30th have that for our next lighthouse? Is that what we're looking for?
I mean, if we use our time wisely, we might be able to do two things on April 11th. Yeah, why not?
Not falling off that right now, so it's about that.
If we use our time wisely.
Okay, so note that.
Well, you know, to that point, I have found, you know, I walked in with, we want to do goals, and I like around two hours to have the conversation without feeling stilted and come up with goals. And I walked into one meeting and said, we have an hour, and we did it. You know, if you set a time to do it and you stay focused, you can do it. Now, would I prefer to give them more time to talk to each other? Yes, but we did it. So if we set up the goal, we're gonna do X, Y, and Z, then that becomes a target.
The only way that's gonna be successful is if you give us homework and the board members actually do their homework and come prepared to the meeting, they've already got a short list in their minds of what the goals are, and then you can accomplish it.
And if you didn't do your homework, you don't get to play.
Exactly.
Remember, we're gonna keep time, 30 seconds.
All right, Michael, no, you need the timer.
All right, so...
It was so concise, right?
I'm gonna continue working with the chair to refine how we present this, and I like the idea of coming up with maybe a couple of critical questions, to say, come prepared to do such and such, I actually have a worksheet, I'm not sure it'll work in this case or not, but I'm gonna look at it and see if that'll help, and we can go from there. And maybe what would be helpful is to share that list of, sort of, those critical things that are already on people's minds, to say, be thinking about how we might need to prioritize some shit.
So let me make sure I have the starter list here, right? So the program review, capital procedures, master facility plan, strategic plan, and I've added academic to that, just because that...
And you know the program review, because Jennifer, when you described it, it wasn't what I envisioned. I think somehow someone has to like, just document what this thing is going to look like, because we keep talking about it.
Well, but that's, we'll be sharing that, and so you can see it. Right, and I think if you go to the update, the last time, you sort of documented the items you were going to be looking at.
Yeah, works, yeah.
Peter, can you put that list together?
Sure, I'll email it to everybody, but it's a program review, capital procedures, master facility plan, strategic plan, I guess renewal, but also execution, because we have a year to go, and then academic.
Okay, thank you.
And academic, obviously, if we're talking about, you know, execution, that's big then already. Dr. Francis?
So, so not, not that there's sticky notes, but we had talked about potential mission, vision, values, and is that something that we want to address or not in terms of the next?
I think that would be part of the strategic plan update, because I think that that flows together.
So, and then, culture, sort of, how do we work on sort of the data validated culture? And maybe under the academic, you know, the math personalized learning, which is then to be rolling out to personalized learning in general, and where are we on that? So, I mean, I think those are ones to consider, and obviously, they're not all gonna make it to the top, I think.
Right, but I think if we start to get too detailed, we basically have done the same thing.
Yeah, 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 I sense that, right, I'm like...
Yeah.
Oh, I have something, yep.
Well, I would like to find some connections between some of these...
Right, and bake in, yeah.
Well, if, if, if the goals are all plumbing, then we've missed it. So, there's nothing wrong with saying, you know, let's, let's be a mission-driven organization. Our job is to educate children, improve education of children every day. Everything else is plumbing. So if we go in and we say, hey, your goals all next year are all plumbing?
Plumbing.
I, then we've missed it. But at the same time, I mean, I agree, there needs to be something academic, I don't know what it is, but here's the other thing we shouldn't do, which we've done this before, I hate this, this is not the, we're not, all organizations do this, my experience with strategic planner, everybody comes in and says, yes, everything I'm already doing fits perfectly to the new strategic plan we just developed, and it's just, it's, so it's, I don't change anything, I just slap, it's like greenwashing stuff, you know, Duracell batteries are 2% recyclable, but they're green, you know, so, but I don't know, I couldn't pick right now, like, one of them that I would pick as a board goal, and very, you know, we keep figuring out, we haven't figured out whether we decided on this or not, review of special education, okay? That to me would be, well, no, it would be for the super to do next year.
That's a superintendent goal, not a board goal.
Right, 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 or, see, I don't see strategic plans as the super's goal. Strategic plan is a...
But that's a shared, I think that's a shared...
It's a shared goal, but some, here's the, one thing you have to do, the other thing you have to do with goals is we have to have owners and participants. Let's not confuse the...
The racy matrix, but, but at the end of the day, Peter, are you gonna go run out and do all of the community forums, or are we going to...
No, 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 I'm not, I mean, Peter, what's not a facility?
I wanna, right, and I wanna make sure there's enough, we both on that.
Peter, I'm not comfortable signing onto that list. I need to go away, I need to...
Oh, no, no, no.
These are just...
Okay, I'm not signing on that I agree to the list in any way.
Nobody's agreeing to it.
Okay, and second of all, no one, not a single member, brought up quality of our talent, no one brought up the human element. I think that is where you move the district, focusing on talent development, do we have diverse workforce, do the students identify with their teachers, do they have a relationship with them?
Talent, people.
Do we outreach in the community? Do we support our students? Do we have wraparound services? There's a lot more to it than, you know, executing on the BET requirements for our policies.
Bring that to the...
No, I guess the question I would ask you...
I think we need much bigger holistic thinking than concrete deliverables. We have to start from a larger space and then work our way down.
I want to make a request. So to me, this was like brainstorming, throw things out, get our stickies on the table, and one of the questions I had is, as maybe part of the homework, what might be nice is, like, make, make a list of stickies, so we could send ideas as we think about them, so that we get a chance to look at all the stickies before we get there.
We don't, don't wanna create a meeting, so I think that...
It's not a big meeting, so can we send them to you?
But the idea of homework is that, you know, is that you can, we'll give you, we'll talk about it, you make the list and come to the meeting with your list.
But I think it'd be nice if, if you could, no, but, or, or, or can we send them to you or somebody, who will then just send the list out to everybody four days ahead? So not for us to discuss, but someone can, can collect a list.
Somebody be a collector. All right, so we'll figure that out, we'll figure out the right way.
Because I think it'd be nice for us to have had a little bit of time to think about ideas that we had previously before we show up.
One of, one of the concerns I have is, a lot of what Jennifer mentioned, really, I think, would probably end up in the strategic plan. would probably end up in the strategic plan. I don't wanna see it lost because I think those parts of, that part of the conversation needs to take place, but out of the outcome of this meeting, it might be that some of these topics end up getting shifted to this is gonna go to the strategic planning committee as part of their process to take this feedback and these expectations. I think that's where that conversation needs to go. But I, I agree with all of you that say it isn't all about just a task list, but that we wanna, we don't wanna lose sight of why we're doing this work and it's not to accomplish tasks.
Is there, I mean, these are so broad, but is, is there kind of a general number doing this a lot, making these goals and doing the work you do? Is there, is there like a magic number that you generally sort of, seriously?
Well, I, I used to aim for five, but now I like three. Because it's, it's doable and, you know, again, the more you have, the less likelihood that you're gonna get any of them done. Or that they won't be done to the level of specific one. So I, I say target three.
And it's something you need to think about every day, so like the longer the list, it's hard to focus on multiple...
Right, no, I was just curious, I thought the idea was...
Especially if some of those are these tasks that are really a year-long process. It isn't a simple thing, let's just put a whole list, it's something we're gonna have to remember and focus on.
You just always need a list of the...
Yeah, a list of the list.
No, a listicle means like, like three, five, seven.
Oh, yeah. So where are we?
Uh, where we are, so the idea would be you and I will connect, we will come up with the board homework for the 11th so we can do some goal setting at that meeting, some goal discussion. Yep, I will send this list to you as well. And then we can figure out the best thing, but before the meeting, there'll be something coming to you with the expectation that you'll be prepared for discussion and send stuff in so that we can have a page prepared so that it's easier for everybody to see. One thing I know people are always concerned about is wordsmithing, so your words are the words that are gonna be on the page, so there won't be any of the wordsmithing. And then we'll, you know, we'll come back, we'll just keep going until we have, I think that's the large. I will say, so in terms of the wordsmithing, so we've tried this a couple of different ways. People didn't wanna do it in a meeting, but we did have broad, strict discussions. We tried to put it down on paper, sent it out, got very few comments back. We then came back and tried to do another discussion and didn't get very far. And then there was a discussion about timing, which brought us to today, I think, does that catch us up to where we were? So there's gotta be an endpoint here because this is an exercise that actually, this should be more common for us, right? If we do goals, you know, they should be done, so when we start to plan our work for next year, our work is aligned, our meetings are aligned, the policy governance folks set in advance the agendas for next year, and those agendas need to align to our goals. Just makes sense.
So I hope you have a structured process for us.
I have several, I'm gonna try to figure out which one's gonna be the most effective.
That would be helpful.
I'm sorry to be dense, but did we decide we're doing super goals, board goals, both? What exactly are we working on on the 11th?
That's a part of the conversation we need to have.
Right, we can have that conversation, I mean, Nick thinks we're probably too ambitious if I'm understanding, to try to do both. I don't know that we are because some of it's already, there's gonna be alignment between the two. We know the strategic plan as a goal, it's gonna show up on both sheets, and it doesn't leave a lot of room for...
It, it might be, I mean, usually the, the farther you get into the discussion, the easier it is to get the last three done, so...
And then we can reach out and see if Tony can join us to just at least be a participant in the conversation, obviously the decision rests with him, so. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'd like to challenge you.
Yeah.
We appreciate your continued patience.
I like how you're talking about other districts, I wonder how many places he goes and he's like, "So in Greenwich."
I was in this district the other day.
But, you know, sometimes it gets too easy, and I, I say that with affection because sometimes I find myself just going, I won't say going through the motions, but it's, it's too simple, like I've done this work 10 or 12 times at least, and it's always different. I like pushback. I like it when people challenge me a little bit because I want this to stay fresh in my mind too, so, and it makes me rethink some things, you know? I don't wanna get to the point where I'm just regurgitating stuff and say, "You're doing it." Like I said, it was comfortable literally 30 seconds before we started saying, "Oh, I'm gonna have to switch to this," because I'm comfortable with it. But like I said, it's, I would rather do this and rock out the entire mentally, et cetera.
Well, I'd love to do that to our students, right? I hope you challenge them, right, no questions, so, there you go.
So you're, you'll make me, you're sharpening my pencil.
Okay.
And, yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, so with that, we're gonna move on to our discussion items. So at our meeting on the 22nd, we got a update on the strategic plan, included in that is figure one is the accountability dashboard, that's the title, I didn't make up the name. And there was a, an interest in revisiting that discussion, that things had been filled in that hadn't been there before, things maybe had shifted from what they were meant to be. As part of that discussion, we took a vote to form a committee to work on this. I guess I'll describe the initial responses tepid, I did reach back out to, to members. We have a couple of people that are willing to serve, we have time commitment issues. I think we should have our conversation tonight about this and then figure out what the best path forward is for, for the committee, because I think if we aren't having a committee, we should have some clear discussion about what we'd like that committee to go off and do and come back and what to discuss, Ms. Dayton.
To answer your question, I need information first from Mr. Mayo on what the dashboard is that we are eventually going to be able to see. I don't understand, I don't understand the link between our current strategic plan, the dashboard, and the next strategic plan.
Well, Jennifer, there's, there's no link.
Okay.
It's not a, the dashboard is a management tool, it's not gonna be used to create the new strategic plan.
It's a management tool, so it's for the administration.
Pretty much, yeah.
Peter, do you wanna, I mean, you, you were one of the ones who said we should keep talking and I think that's right, why don't you, we...
Yeah, but I, I mean, maybe you can elaborate your question, Jennifer. We originally, we're, we're, maybe this'll be education for the two of you. What wound up happening is, is that going back five, six years ago, there was a discussion about we don't effectively store data in the organization about performance, students, so on and so forth, right? So the first problem was they were trying to get it out of people's laptops into a central repository, okay? Phil McCursley championed that because his CIO told him he needed to do it, he said, "Let's put in a data warehouse." Having all the data in one place is great, but if you can't visualize the data or draw meaning from the data, who cares what's living in the, in the...
In the...
CIO, in the warehouse. The board started by saying, started that entire process by saying, "Let's build a dashboard based upon the data that's in the warehouse." And the dashboard, at that time, Gaetan was here, the dashboard was only supposed to be a place where we would look at board-level goals to the strategic plan. There were supposed to be 14 or 15 of them, they were in three categories. First one was academic, second, no, academic, there were five on that one, social, emotional, which is alignment to our strategic plan, there were supposed to be five of those. And then there were supposed to be those that were like infrastructure, okay? That dashboard was gonna draw from the data warehouse so that nobody needed to like retain it, and it was not gonna change very often, right? Because strategic, the outcomes on strategic goals wouldn't change very often. The administration was supposed to go away and extend the data warehouse to create a whole set of different metrics that they use to manage day-to-day, right? How many tests are administered, what's going on with STAR, how many people are doing growth, you know, so on and so forth. I don't think that ever got built. Maybe it did get built, I don't know to what degree that the, I've heard talking to the vendor that that never got built or executed. They went off on a tangent of doing student profiles, but I don't know if that ever happened either. So the net of it is, the conversation I was hoping to have, Peter, tonight was much more simple, because I think Ms. Dayton said in the meeting, what, what happened with our goals? The board-level goals and those in the dashboard, and how did we do against those? To me, that seems to be a level set that we need to have. And then separately, we can go talk about, like Jen is an example, in this document she presented, she gives us not only the strategic goals, but then she also has a section that she's added that we never asked for, which I suppose some people are probably interested in, which is the operational level goals. That's the right-hand side of the chart that she presents? Yes, yes. You guys know what I'm talking about, don't you?
Yeah, we know what we're talking about.
Those are like subtitles.
Those are subtitles.
The data behind the data.
The data behind the data, right? So when we talked about this the other night, I think, we talked about it two times, Jennifer at one point said is, she made a point about data, that we haven't reviewed the data. Seems that we should get level, I was hoping we would get level set tonight on what, what our original data was, what the data is we have right now, and just do that as a level set. And to Jennifer's point, eventually, it would, I, it doesn't directly lead Ralph to the new strategic plan, but it definitely informs what you would wanna do in the next strategic plan. So get level set on that data. Now, I don't know if you guys are gonna, I presume you guys were gonna present the original data and where we are right now, just so we can all get on the same sheet of music.
And another thing too is there were many tiles that we had...
Originally not built.
Results, but no targets. So we were able to measure it, but we hadn't set a target yet, so I think we were also seeing for the first time...
I think that's right. Specifically, the social emotional.
Yes, yes.
Yes, it's true.
So targets, I don't know where they come from.
Just, so we, we only set, as a board ever set, the academic stripe. We never got around to setting the other stripes.
So we wanted to.
I know we did, but remember, we had that trouble of that, we were still, they were still trying to sort out how they would measure it. So like in social emotional learning, if you remember, they said, "Well, we're gonna not use Harris, we're gonna deploy Panorama, we're gonna use Panorama, and that's the way we're gonna measure it." But we never did the step of saying, "Okay, now that you've deployed Panorama, what should the target be?" We agreed how it would be measured, we didn't agree what the measurement would be, what the target would be.
We were, we were looking too for recommendations.
We were looking for recommendations, yeah.
So maybe in February, that was recommendations, but it didn't come across that way.
Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. No, keep going. Oh, right there.
There you go.
Can you make that bigger a little bit?
Sorry. Just go up to the top, the three...
I think it'll let you magnify, the top. No?
You guys are like the kids.
So just, just, just so that, just so that the board is level set, the, the, we, for the one, the top stripe, which is academic, the first four boxes, the first four boxes were actually, they've squished one of them together, it's one, two, three, four, five. Those five measurements have been the five measurements, we set targets to them because they say goal. And the board did that three years ago, three, three and a half years ago. The ones that are below, I can't find any meeting notes of when we actually took action to set targets. We may have discussed it, but I don't remember us ever setting those. So the, the top five have been in place for years and the, yeah, thank you.
Just count them.
And keep, go up a little, there we go, Eric. And the 52, 68, 51, 61, 70, 38, 58, 26. I guess those are ones that we set. So we should, I would suggest, if we wanna look at those and look one more year ago in this plan, if we like those and we like the target, maybe we should take the action and ratify it. The stuff on the right is sub-indicators, is just kind of information for us to know how we're doing. We used to call that, Peter called it right, we used to call it sub-tiles.
It's a kind of a bad one.
The administration came up with that, but we've never really looked...
It should actually be below too, not beyond.
Right. It's supposed to help you say, like particularly a math performance index, I don't know what if that's the right thing, but the idea of a sub-indicator would have been, are we on track to get to that number, the box that matches two on the left? Yeah, yes, thank you, thank you, good work.
Thanks, all right.
So... How do you want to do this now?
So my, my question is, I mean, we, leaving out the academic success measures, those are solid, those are things that we should be measuring. Question is, should we be measuring the things below that? Are those the right things to measure to get where we want to go?
Well, let me just, I, I'll just give you...
That's a question that we've been discussing for the last two weeks.
Well, what we...
Are those the indicators we wanna measure or do we wanna measure something else?
But they've been...
Hang on, we gotta raise our hands and use my foot to prevent it. Ms. Ray, make that one.
I don't mind like re-asking that, but a lot of those metrics have been what we thought would be what indicated success in those rows for quite some time.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna echo that, Ralph. Ralph, if you look at them and you think about it, right, this is the discussion we had and I think it was a very intelligent discussion. The discussion was, how would I know, other than a kid just going to school in academics? How would I know that a kid going in academics, how would I measure well-being, right? So we wanna know if they participate in the other parts of being a full student, right? So that's how these things got picked. We wanna, hold on, let me just finish. We want to know, is a kid, are they, do we have high depression, anxiety, or are they, do they have a sense of well-being? That's the core, one of the core issues of social emotional learning, right? Are they engaged in the community, right? Are they happy with their teachers and the school, okay? Some of these things we picked because they're measurable, right? But we kept asking Mary over and over and over again, and I think she's struggled with it, as everybody struggles with it nationally, is how do you measure the effectiveness of health and wellness with kids? These were the things we picked in lieu of somebody saying, "Oh, the magic elixir is coming out," and what's that group in Chicago, the Wellness...
Castle, Castle.
Was it?
Castle, Castle.
Castle. At the time, we said to Castle, Castle was starting to look at how do you measure this stuff? And if Castle came up with something, we were ready to replace it with whatever they came up with. But I haven't ever seen anything that is suitable to replace it.
That's actually very interesting because...
Is there something now?
That is one of the...
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
I completely forgot my thought now, it's not the technology.
But the microphone works.
That was very interesting because...
Very interesting because you are actually heading to exactly one of the things that we as a group have, one of the reflections we had is that there are in fact new opportunities, new metrics, new technologies, new philosophies, and we're saying, what we, I think what Ralph was going to get to was that you're absolutely right, these have been in place for five years, these are the official measurements, love them or leave them. What we have an opportunity now, as we go into a next set, and what we as a group have been discussing are reflections on what was our plan? Did these metrics work? What, what thoughts do we have for the next iteration and considerations for the work that you are clearly going to do? I was personally thrilled that I came in eavesdrop because I don't think, I think everything that you discussed in the last two hours with Nick, is, is absolute, whoa, absolutely what, where we were thinking. The idea of elevating the focus of the board, absolutely. The idea of elevating the goals, absolutely. But the idea of not focusing on activities, Peter, but outcomes, that's key. Accountability, absolutely. Those are, literally, I'm gonna go through slides and those words are just gonna pop up. So I think there was a lot of consistency about the conversations that we've had with what you just experienced. And it is, I think, a lot of what we reflected on is the source of much of the agitation that has occurred in the, why can't we, why, why are we not getting progress on this? Why can't we see what we're doing? Are we making progress toward this? Is this in fact measuring what we thought we wanted and, and as we've reflected on this? I think the answer is no. There are in fact some very direct connections, but some of it, and specifically the areas that we've talked about, is that the softer ones, it's, there's not a really direct connection, and I think that's something we talk about for the next duration. But I have a degree that this is what you got, you only need to use this for another 18 months, stick with this pony and then let's, let's look at the next one.
That was my...
Okay, Ms. Ray, right.
That's what I kind of felt like, why change the metric goals now, this far into the plan... the plan, wait till the next plan? That was kind of my point, and like, you just can't, you have your strategic plan, and, and you just can't all of a sudden in the middle of it say, oh, I'm gonna change my goal.
I'm mistaken, I'm sure. You gotcha.
At times, I need to express disappointment, and I'm disappointed because we had kicked off the year with this slide here. And we had identified what we considered to be the holes.
Mm-hmm.
And here we are now in March, and we're talking about not having measured the right things. So we effectively have lost an academic year. I, I just can't put it in words. It is very disappointing. I don't mind if you decide to change the goal or the target, but the actual category of what's important to us, if that changes before the end of this plan, I'm gonna have a real problem.
So when you look at the square on student satisfaction, the goal is sixty-five, the target is sixty, the latest data is sixty-one. What I heard you say at the beginning is, we're not sure that we're measuring the right things. Oh, no, I, I meant that these are, may not be the most effective proxies for what we are trying to achieve. It's not that, it's not that we're not attempting very much to measure what the board has articulated as the goals, it's whether this is the most effective.
Are you saying the instrument of measurement is not the right one?
No.
Or are you saying that category, that category of student satisfaction isn't getting at what we really care about?
Yes.
No, no, I was saying the latter.
Yeah, I think I was saying the latter. And, and actually, that's not one that I think that we have as much concern about as the, the sports or the extracurricular. I think those are, are two that are, are probably the weakest of them.
But can I, Peter, can I?
Well, Dr. Francis first.
So the first thing I want to do is go back just for a second, you know, we're talking about these things have been here for five years, but I have a little file where I've like kept various versions, and if I go back to February of sixteen, what we had is percentage of students who are engaged in school. I understand that what we had to do is then figure out, what does that mean? But, you know, we, we've tried to measure that in different ways, but it's not like those things have been here for five years, right? That was three years ago, and we didn't have those words up there, so this is.
It was sixteen.
June, June. Twenty, June twenty sixteen was when you were.
Right. So, so it's not like we've been here for five years, and I think this was sort of our attempt trying to.
And now in twenty nineteen.
We're only in the fourth year, so three years ago.
Three years ago, this is sort of what we had. But what I'm saying is, you know, we initially started with was engagement. So, you know, I think, I think what happens is, you, you try to figure out how you want to measure that, and, and I think, so I think there's been iterations, and I think, well, I don't think we should change too much at this point. I think the process of understanding how do we get to the goals, are these measuring what we want to measure, I think that's important for us to understand as we do think about the next one.
And we need to do that tonight?
No.
No, I think it just was a general concept. The other thing, just to throw out there, which is a little off topic, but I also wonder if it's a wise idea for us to rush into our next one. I kind of feel like we really want to take our time and do it right.
Yeah.
That's how that could be, absolutely.
Okay. So, here, that's my, that's my point on process. I, I'm just trying to understand what we're doing tonight. I, I can appreciate where people, you know, this will naturally drift into, hey, there's newer instruments, better ideas, we can do better alignment, right? I, I, that's why I liked what you guys, I, I can imagine why people want to have that conversation, but just given the hour, maybe we should be a little bit less expansive and just say, let's park that conversation. I'm just wondering if we can just get level set, I just maybe had more modest goals, which is, let's just get level set on the ones that we had. Um, Kim was just pointing out, in two thousand sixteen, we named these items, but there's a whole bunch of stuff that did not have a target to them.
Yes.
Okay? So, somebody came up with those goals for us, I guess, and I don't know what they're based on.
Right.
So, I'd love to just get level set, and then let's just, we, the other thing is, guys, we never published this in here.
Yeah.
You have to go on an Easter egg hunt to come to a meeting to find this. Who's gonna watch the tape or check the document?
Well, these good.
No, I understand that, but I mean, that's not, that's not good. That's not good.
So, so just going forward, I, I think it might make sense, if you're willing, obviously the academic is what it is, but if you could maybe quickly walk through some of the major tiles and the sub-indicators, can we just do the majors and leave the sub? Yeah, that's fine, if you want to just walk through the majors, explain how.
How the target was set.
Right, how the target was set, and, and if there's discussion, we can take them one at a time.
Ms. President. That, that was in fact not what we were.
Do you have a presentation?
I, I do, have a few.
Would you like to be level set?
Very sexy slides for you.
Do you want us to analyze the contents of that presentation?
GBS Strategic Plan Reflections for twenty twenty.
Is it recommending changes, or is it, what's the focus of that presentation?
Ways we could enhance the next version, given our.
I'm sure it's a great presentation, I don't want to do that to.
I had the, I had the one pulled up from the fall, so we can look and say, okay, this, there wasn't a goal in the fall, and we never voted on that goal, you know, so there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
No, that's what I need to do, just.
So I think seven of those, because we didn't have goals.
Okay. So, I would like to get to what you have, because I think that's actually the more interesting work. I've never been a fan of this, but people want to go down this road, we will go down this road.
But that was our expertise.
Could you for.
So maybe there was just a misalignment on what we were trying to accomplish.
Okay. So, so maybe if you could go through the major categories, in the personal and interpersonal, and, and just explain what those, those goals are, why they're there.
All right, I'm not the owner of the specific tiles. I think that one of the things that we attempted to do in the most recent is to actually be very specific about who was the owner, who could specifically agree to and support those goals. So, well, I can't, if you have questions about the specifics, we can.
Can we just take the first one, national average sports participation?
A point.
Yes. That was a, that is a national average of sports participation.
So that's why you guys picked it? Right? Because it's a number that you can benchmark?
It's a benchmark. It's a benchmark.
So the next one you.
Sixty was nationally.
And how is it measured? How is it measured, and are we measuring it the same way they measure it?
Uh, that is one of the, one of the points I wanted to make about some of these metrics.
So why don't we have Jennifer go through what she was gonna be then, and then we can ask.
It's a, it's, it's a, I, I have a couple posters in my office that show young preschoolers doing yoga, and the caption is, I'm be flexible, and things can change, and I can become. I'm imagining my preschool.
But we have it, we have this, it's right here, we ratified this, sports participation, students participating in athletics, it.
Excluding.
Excluding intramural sports among students in grade nine through twelve.
So that is.
Yes, that's fine, it's, it's that with the national.
That's if we were measuring, how did the target sixty percent get set? That was the question.
So, with, I can tell you how we're measuring that, is that is the number of children in FCA participation each year, divided over the number of GHS students.
Yeah, that's how they got to fifty-two, but so how did?
Plus, I mean, they're.
It's the same idea.
It's the same.
Okay, guys, we have too many conversations going on right now, so.
Can we go to the next one?
Yeah, why don't we go to the next one, the fitness standards?
The fitness standards, the goal is seventy-five percent, because that is what is established as the NGAI standard, that's the state standard.
Perfect, great. Extracurricular participation.
I wonder if that, who was that? Who, who, Mary?
Yes.
Mary, or is it?
Because it was, uh.
That was the high school.
This was the whole debate.
How many kids were involved in clubs, and that was self-reported.
Oh, yes, I'm more questioning who, how we determine the goal.
Right, that's, that's the question.
Well, here's the interesting part on this, is that you're actually at ninety-nine percent with opportunity block, because we've run the numbers, and virtually every child is engaged in some form of personal interest extracurricular.
There you go.
Yeah, that, okay.
That's a little interesting.
That's smart, how that got measured.
Well, no, because a lot of those kids are sitting in the same class they were in the last. In fact, we know a huge percentage are, because there's, there's only, there's a limited number of clubs they can have during that time, there's a limited number of.
Right, but they change frequently? So if the question is, and, and this is one who actually, one of the issues with this is, A, there is no reliable way to measure this, and B, there is no, is this really a goal that we, as an organization, would say we were successful because we have a hundred percent of our students participating in an extracurricular? And, and is that something that we want at a cabinet and board level?
And that'll be for the next time.
Exactly, yes.
So sixty percent, if it's, if it's not really indicative of anything, why have we set a target that we're under?
She doesn't know.
Okay.
She doesn't know who said it. Um, that's what you said, right, Jen?
Uh, I would, I would say that the owner needs to defend the goals. I'm, I'm the typist.
I don't understand, this is, this is really disturbing.
Okay, Jennifer, that thing.
I don't understand, I really don't understand.
Ask for some board members to go through this, I'd like to get through it as quickly as possible. Because I'd like to get to what Jen's got, because I think that that's more valuable.
We should both be saying who wants to.
So, so let's, let's finish this exercise, because I don't want to repeat this again. Sixty-one percent student satisfaction.
Uh, do you think that was Ann's?
That was mine, because that's a question that the principals ask at, at the end of every year, and when we did the Panorama survey, that's what the goal was, so that's what the outcome was, I think it was the national outcome.
Well, we do benchmark.
Student satisfaction.
Ms. O'Neill.
Was that data from the Panorama survey ever shared with the board?
Yes.
Yeah, it says here, by the way, student says.
She's to be mad, Peter, Barbara had a question.
Yeah, so when was it shared?
I, I did not personally share it, I'm sure remember, can you speak to that?
Do we have any kind of documents that were sent to us, or any information?
I, I'm trying to recall, I believe it was, it would have been.
No. South.
South.
And then I know in that.
I do have a perception of south about sharing.
And I think, yeah, and it was shared after the children came on board.
Yeah, so I guess if you can go back and figure out if that was shared and if not, I just.
But Barbara says, school satisfaction, this is what we, as a board ratified, percentage of students expressing positive sentiments on a composite index score from the valuing of school items from the Panorama survey, see appendix four. It was a percent, and it said, this will be benchmarked in SLY seventeen, school year seventeen, and targets will be set in the spring of two thousand seventeen, based upon the benchmarks from the first administration done in the school system. That was what was supposed to happen. Okay? So, my only question here is, did that happen, and how does that relate to this target that was set, which is sixty-five percent? Where did that come from, sixty-five percent? Does anybody know?
All right, so we'll move on to student well-being.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking, I might have something else useful. Uh, student well-being, I believe is, again, Ann, so Ann can speak to that?
Uh, the student well-being, again, it was part of the Pan, it was part of the Panorama survey, so that was the data, the national data, I believe, from the first year that it was administered, and we looked at that to see where the increase could be, because we wanted it to be at seventy-two percent. I think that was the national goal, so that's why we set that goal.
Right, we're at the, I, I was just thinking, this might be a helpful reference point, we, we are at the seventieth percentile on the well-being index, and sixty-fifth percentile actually for valuing the school.
So two things, one is, in the fall when we got this, that said fifty-seven percent, so.
Which one?
The student well-being.
Um, I think what we've done is, it actually, the way that's Panorama presents, is it presents two scores, elementary and secondary, I've restated them to try and give us a blended look at it, that's weighted for the grade, the proportionality of the grades.
And the other request I would have is, you know, if these, if these new numbers, or, I'm sorry, the goals are based on some national standards, I think it would be great for us to have those references, or to have that information, so we can understand that, because our job is to get the input from you guys, then evaluate whether we think that makes sense, and then to vote on it, and say, yes, we think that's a reasonable goal. So I think having that reference, having that information, having something that helps us, and if there's nothing available, then there's nothing available, and we're making it up. But I think we, we need to understand that one way or the other.
Ms. Joe.
Tell me if anyone else has got this, maybe you could send us a follow-up, how we got this in the written document, and we can go to Jen's presentation and put it even, rather than keep asking questions that they don't have answers to.
I actually, we have three left, so I would just, I want to.
I would throw.
Once and done, we're not coming back to this.
Well, okay, maybe not, I've been on the board agrees with that.
Right, Peter, you're making statements.
No, we're going, we're going through this, actually, you can provide the document.
I think we're all.
Right, but I think, I think we're trying to understand how we're setting our goals, I think this is an important step for us to understand, how do we do it next time, what works, what doesn't work, and I think we're still living in the strategic plan, so one of the things about.
Peter actually won.
I know, but his tone, and I get it, but we all didn't take a vote, but the whole tone is.
But we're trying to get through it, several people have to get through it, so if we, if we take sidetracking, we're.
But several of us are interested in actually having this conversation, which I think was the reason we set up this meeting, was to have this conversation, and maybe we didn't all understand everything, but I prefer not to rush through it.
Okay, we're on community service.
Uh, community service is measured as a, the goal was to measure the percentage of children who have at least ten hours of community service daily. We actually have no way to track that, so the proxy for that are the children who accepted the National Honor Society, because they, uh, we do have documentation of their community service hours. So that represents the number, the percentage of children who achieve that.
Mr. Chair.
I'm maybe way off base here, I was just asking, Kim, here, this idea we can't measure community service, I don't know what we're talking about, because if I recall this conversation, we picked this because we do measure community service, because it's a, is it graduation permit? I understand this, but there, first of all, you have to prove some level of community service to graduate. Okay? So this idea that we don't have a tracking mechanism in place is not right. The debate that we had at the time was, should we raise the bar? But this idea that we don't have a tracking mechanism in place, an administration mechanism in place, we went over this, of course we have it in place, because you have, kids have to do it in order to be able to graduate.
Mr. Man.
Yeah, it's a minimal number.
It's five, it's half the number.
It's five, in one class.
It's part of the CIC class.
Right.
So we may not have a way to track it beyond that five, so once someone has documented it, maybe we're not tracking beyond that, but it's an interesting question, if we think it's important, then is there some way that we would want to try and do that?
Absolutely. I have explored several options on how to collect extracurricular particip, yeah, as well as community service, and it ends up being self-reported, and it is not in any way reliable, or even, I mean, massaging of the data is so significant.
I'm just gonna make one point, I'm gonna make.
Well, can I, can I finish, you finished.
Um, I think that is, is actually one thing that we wanted to bring up, is as you set goals, consider whether they are in fact something that is actionable, and that we can actually measure.
Hi, Mr. Chair.
I'm just, I don't, that's why I don't want to have this debate right now, because I am, we cannot shape a strategy, or a measurement strategy, or a reporting strategy, or an oversight strategy, where we go to least common denominator of what people can only do today. An organization never moves forward if that's what we do. An organization never moves forward if that's what we do. And I realize, Jen, you've actually been with this for a while, so, um, I, I, this is a groundhog day on this. Okay, here we are four years later. It's a whopping, I don't know, 12 measurable things. Okay, four or five of them we couldn't measure four years ago. And four years you didn't figure out how to measure the four we couldn't measure. I mean, this is, this to me is, when we get around to this, we need to have this conversation because if we keep bending our strategic plan and all this stuff to what is right now and nothing happens in four years, okay, we have a much bigger conversation we need to have that isn't about anything that's on this chart.
Well, well, let me, let me just reference this sentence because I'm really raised by it and you didn't see. You said, why doesn't anybody come to me and said, go to board and said, I need $500,000 to provide a data system? I in fact have a giant map on my wall of what I would like to build in order to achieve this goal, which is to provide actionable, timely, and relevant data to all, to, for good decision-making for students, teachers, administration, and the board. So I'm just saying.
Ralph, with all due respect to your administrators, okay, we have spent a ton of money on IT systems in the last five years of this board. We spent a lot of money with ECRUP and a lot of it isn't even deployed. Okay, I do this stuff for a living, so I would venture to say, other than Brian Paldunes, I'm pretty confident on this particular subject and more than anybody else in this room. All right, I will tell you, this is, we're, this is just people not executing. Okay, so, but we need to have this conversation separately. And we should have it, I would rather have it not drilling down on this. I'm patient enough to have the conversation of what needs to happen in the future. But this idea that we can, um, go along like this, the board, this is not on you, Ralph, but you're sitting in the chair. The board set this thing in 2016 in a meeting. The board did its job. And do we just happen to be having this conversation because maybe we as a board just didn't ask the question? That doesn't mean the administration shouldn't have been doing it.
So Peter, just to respond respectfully, whose administration was gonna do it? Bill McCursys, Jill Gaddays, South Forests, Ralph Mayos? I'm, I'm just saying.
I, I agree. I totally agree with you, Ralph. You know, I don't want to go there because I don't think...
No, we're not gonna go there. I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, um...
There are some people in this room who've been here for the duration.
Okay, I understand that. But what we need to do, what I think we need to do anyway, is someone has to be accountable for each one of these steps. And that, that's, that never happened. That never happened.
Ms. Neal.
I would just like to change the tone. I don't think any of this is helpful when you beat up on people that are, you work with, if you're taking lessons from the... I mean, we had a lighthouse. No blame, we're working together. And maybe I'm a new member, so I don't have the animosity that perhaps some of the other people do on this table. But I'd like to sort of move forward. If we have to get through two more to satisfy it seems half the board, let's do that. And then I'd love to hear what Jen has presented because she's a very intelligent person and goes into her presentations. Thank you.
All right, so why don't we move on to the staff school climate?
That again is with the principals and their school, sorry, I keep forgetting. That's with the school principals and making sure that they are addressing the staff's needs. That was from the aggregate from the Panorama survey. And that was from all of them. And I want to see it at 80% minimally. And I said that, I, I did that when we had our conversation. I said, I don't know why it's a 58%. If we don't have all of our teachers, the majority of our teachers satisfied with what they're doing in their buildings, then we're not gonna make those changes. So that's why I put it in the D A.
Thank you. All right, so then the last one is family engagement.
Uh, that would be, resumes?
Sort of.
Not really.
Well, no, that's true. Misses and Ann's.
It's, it's both of us. So I'll, I'll explain because from a historical standpoint, so 26% is, and I think I explained this at the last meeting, but 26% is, this is Panorama survey. It's a question set on family engagement. Most of the questions are about frequency of, really about contact hours and touch points. And the way that Panorama reports the data is the, you know, sort of the top two most frequent are favorable, and 26% is the most favorable. That's benchmarked against Panorama's data set nationally. And we're in the 60th percentile with that 26% and it was like a very low number. Uh, because it's about contact hours, that particular question set, generally speaking, we set the goal at 30% because we felt that that was some kind of a level of movement that was relatively substantive and achievable in the next year since it's one more year of the plan. And because I know I have signaled in a number of reports to the board and to our white colleagues, that I don't think that that is the ideal question set which was established, I don't even know by whom. Board is, board is particular or proposed. I mean, the board approved it, but proposed by. I don't think that that is the best measure of true family engagement. So I think we need to revisit that next time around over the next year. We felt that 30% was relatively achievable. And Ann can speak to the strategies if you're interested in that part.
All right, so just as a go-forward, I think one of the asks here is documentation of each one of these tiles as to where the goal came from and who the accountable owner is. Is there anything else anybody wants in that sense? Mr. Sher.
I just, the one I don't understand is, which was what kicked this, for me kicked this off, was a statement that was made on the fourth academic tile. Exams with growth, I, I thought we originally selected meeting their projected growth.
It is, but the, the growth is calculated.
Are you measuring it using the ECRIS score?
Yeah, that's the ECRIS. That's the ECRIS.
So it just has a different title to it? Because I think it was originally, it was students meeting or exceeding projected academic growth. So I just didn't recognize that language.
The language, yes. It's, it's based on the assessments. It's a change in the working assessments or exams test. My language inconsistency, but that is absolutely the ECRIS tile.
Because the one other thing that jumped off the page for me in this, you know, just, and I, I don't know if I'm reading the data right. The, these numbers are all, with the exception of the AP exams, they're all pretty much where we were when we started. And that, that to me is the more interesting part is, you know, the level set, particularly for the academics are the ones that have been so solid based on the assessment. It was well-integrated, the assessment system you've pitched numerous times. So it did, the, the whole foundation underneath this thing is very solid. There's not a lot of moving parts. The other ones have had moving parts, targets. We got a little set on that. And I don't know how we get underneath that. Because I, I, that was a basis of my observation that we've done a lot of work. We've done really great things. But in a lot of cases, it, I guess it didn't move the needle as much as I thought it would move the needle. I mean, the whole purpose of this thing is to have a set of strategies we would deploy. We would be able to see over, you know, a long longitudinal way, progress. And, um, I don't know how you guys think about that. And when, when and how, I, that discussion I would like to have because I'd like to have a discussion to say, what's going on? And what do we need to focus on if it's not moving the needle the way we wanted it to move the needle?
That, that wasn't the plan for tonight.
No, I understand that. I think there was a reaction to that when I said that at the last board meeting. And somebody was saying, well, that's not what the data shows, so... But this is the data we're looking at and it looks like it's the same, right?
Irene.
At the meeting, and I was scripting, but you asked us a question, how do we plan to improve? So we took that and we came back as a cabinet and we reflected on that. And as a result of that, I mean, it was a deep discussion, a good hard look at our work and overall, all the work of the district. And that's what we have, and we were hoping to share with you this evening.
Can I ask another question about the tiles?
Dr. Francis.
Um, so the other thing, and I don't think we need to go through this bit by bit, but to me, the sub-indicators or the subtitles or things that we've been referring to before, that, you know, those should be feeding into, or sort of the steps that get us to improve in terms of others. And I, and it's not clear to me that I feel like I understand how each of these connects to the other. So I, I sort of feel like, I think people don't seem to want to continue this conversation. But that to me is another piece of this, is understanding what are our intermediary measurements or what are the subtitles, or what do we think are the steps that are gonna get us to improvement? And that we're measuring those things as well. And I, I feel like there's interesting things over here, but I don't know how they feed in. And, and so I, I think that that's an important thing if we're thinking about creating something is the subtitles should be those intermediary steps. So there should be the things that, that help you get there. And then, you know, so classroom teacher attendance, I think is an example I gave earlier. Yes, I could see how that would tie in, but I'm not sure I think all of those do.
Ms. Neal.
So almost like nesting, not, not all in a row, like they would be more in a column.
Visually, or at least just an explanation.
I guess as part of the documentation of what these are, that, that could be done, right? Just an explanation of how they tie back to the, to the main, to the main goals. All right, anything else on this or can we, like Jen?
One last comment.
Since our plan was scheduled to run to the year 2020, I thought this board in 2020 would say, here are the things the plan accomplished. In order to do that, we have to have metrics with targets. If we don't have targets, I don't see how in 2020 we can explain to the public what the plan accomplished. I know you want to move on to the next plan, but we have a responsibility as elected officials to tell the public what the plan accomplished over the five years that we set way back when in 2015. So I still have a problem and I will stop talking and let the conversation drift to the future.
I guess, Jennifer, we still have one more year on this plan, so it's a little premature to say, this is... Okay, did you get all my information? It's a little premature to say where we've landed. I think the, the way we do that is, we're gonna give a report from the administration at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, the end of the year. And through that process, I think we figure out where have we gone. We know what the journey is. We don't know the end yet. Mr. Sher.
I don't want, I don't know. I agree with Ms. Dayton. I'm not gonna focus on the negative. I agree with Ms. Dayton, okay? Because I'm a data head and I go look at this, the, the three, here's the reality of it, right? Our aggregate ELA score in 1415, we had 77.8% meeting goal. Students meeting goal as measured by the state, okay? In 1718, because remember, this is percentile, so you have to look underneath the data to see what's really going on. It's, um, 78%. So the thing that I'm noticing longitudinally in ELA, I mean, I said this the other night. The good news is we haven't lost any ground. The bad news is we haven't gained any ground either. So, um, and this percentile thing, percentile was developed by a percentile rank. Uh, we were number 20, in 1415, we were number 24 out of 187. Guess what? We're number 22 out of 187. So we're kind of, that's my point, is we're kind of in the same place. It's not, it's not bad news, but to Jennifer's point, we've invested pretty heavily. And I, for me, I thought we would, I knew we weren't gonna move by very much, but I thought 92 would have been a push. And, um, so math, we made gains, but our gains are identical to everybody else in the state. So we haven't done any better than anybody else in the state of Connecticut. Right, we're up in raw scores from 64% to 71% of our kids meeting goal. But at the state level, the average went from 43 to 51, so that was six. So the average moved six and we moved seven. So it's good news that we moved on math. And I, that's, that's, so I'm where Jennifer is because I think we do, I don't think these numbers are gonna change substantially in one year. I mean, you don't have four years of it changing a lot and then magically in the next one it hockey sticks. That would be a wonderful situation to be in, but let's be fair to teachers and administrators. That's pretty tall order. So the thing that I do think we need to do, and I didn't expect to do it tonight, Peter, but this kind of level sense, and I'm thrilled to hear eventually when you want to talk about it, Irene, is, okay, what's working, what's not working? And then how do we focus on the, on, that's the next strategic conversation it has to be. But this idea that, you know, we wait one more year, we're gonna get a particularly different outcome. I, statistically, that's probably not gonna happen.
Right, and at the end of the day, because you're not gonna show the first year and the last year, you're gonna show all five years. So if, if we're flat all five years, that tells a, that tells a story. Because these are, these are once-a-year data marks. So it concerns me that, and it concerned me from the beginning, that these were once-a-year data marks, right? It really doesn't, it doesn't tell us a whole lot in one snapshot. It, over time it should, but I don't know. Dr. Francis.
So it sounds like we've got a couple of presentations. I just wanted to finish up the questions. So it sounds like we're gonna be getting some information about whatever there is out there that we face some of these on in terms of national. And then are we gonna come back and just vote on these goals? Then in another meeting, once we've had that information, is that sort of our plan from here?
Is that the interest of everybody? I think some of these we, we voted on before, right?
Uh, most of it, most of the bottom ones we haven't. I think only one of those was in there at our September meeting, so most of those are new.
Just, I'm looking at the document. We had one, two, three, four.
The same one. It's the same one.
We had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven or eight of these that we never adopted the goal target. If you like the goal target that they came up with, I can't believe, I don't think we could come up with a better one. And we only got one more year to go. I, I just, I just say we accept them as they presented them, unless somebody wants to do more research.
It's not, it's not an action item tonight. You could certainly add that to the agenda for the next meeting if you think you're ready to document, uh, you know, where the goal came from. And I think if that's done, I think I'm comfortable with that.
Right, if they have, if it was based on a national standard, then send that to us so we know. I just think that's good practice for us to know where it came from. If it wasn't, if it was like, we couldn't find anything and this is our best guess, then we understand that and then we vote on it.
Okay, it seems like everybody's comfortable with that. So what we'll do is add it to the agenda for the next meeting just to, uh, just to pass it through a vote. All right, with that, Jen, would you like to present? Does anybody feel like they need a break for a minute? Now, all right, we're gonna power through. Oh, pardon, yeah. You need to leave any time. I'm stuck here.
We get to later.
Oh, that's a quick, how do I make it go?
We're early.
Okay, got it.
You're Easter, guys. You're gonna be sore.
Now, as soon as Ashwin says June, it's time for Jennifer.
Yes, exactly.
All right, so what Ralph asked me to do is to summarize some of the reflections that cabinet has had on the existing plan. Some of the pain points and suggestions that we have for the next iteration, however, and whenever that, that process begins. First slide is, is a list of elements of a strategic plan. And I will say that part of this is rooted in the fact that, I think most of you know I'm second career. And in my prior career, I, it was one of my roles is to review literally hundreds of business plans, strategic plans. And while they can appear in many different organizational, you know, some people have their own little, and the vocabulary can change, the organization can change. But fundamentally, these elements generally exist. And, uh, I think there is, a lot of people have talked about alignment. We have several of these. We have five of these in our articulated plan. And I think the ones that are missing... I guess I have to... I gotta, I gotta earn my, my chocolate, I see. But I think the ones that are missing are a source of some of the pain. Because I agree with you that one of the roles of the board is, certainly if I were board member, I would be doing periodic updates. Where are we on moving our plan forward? But starting with, and while look at the, we have a mission, we have a vision, but clear organizational goals are missing as we've just talked about. We do have metrics which are, should theory, it'd be a proxy for the goals and then generate the scorecard, which you can then publish and say, these are the elements we were measuring our organizational success on. But we are missing those goals. And then something that is very helpful is an actual articulation of the values, which provide guardrails on our strategy. It ensures that we don't seek to achieve metrics at any cost. So, you know, but values of partnership with families, empowerment, accountability, pairing accountability with authority, respect, collaboration, whatever we decide as an organization. But the values I think are a helpful element to describe. We have strategy, which is the how. Once we have our goals and a clear articulation of how we are going to be able to tell the public that we've achieved our goals. Then it becomes a question of how we are going to achieve that. And we've articulated a strategy, which is predominantly personalized learning. We've identified areas of change. Going forward, it could be something like pedagogy or teacher expertise, professional development. It could be our physical facilities, it could be data systems. We have those. What I think would help is if, and we might, we've looked at through the documentation, it's a question of being very clear about what the strategic objectives are, both over the time of the plan, five years, and then an actual annual plan, which I think would be a helpful document for you to then periodically review and say, you know, we had a five-year goal. I think in this environment, five years is very long. I would go with three or four, but that's not my task. But to have an actual articulation of, in year one, you know, we're going to have a multi-year capital plan completed. We're going to secure long-term funding and we are going to have a complete detailed plan for phase one classrooms. You would be able to check in on that over the course of the year. Not necessarily metric, but certainly progress monitoring, which is something that you talked about with Nick, a source of frustration.
Just, just my way of information, Jen, I agree with you 100%.
And I agree with 90%.
We, we had that. We have that.
Okay.
Okay, not we, the board had it, the administration had it. And, because I can remember who was sitting in a room with me at the, who was on the strategic planning committee of the board? Who sat in the, in the... Who was the one, I think Barbara, you were there? We sat in a room with Jill Gildean had just started. And she was, she hadn't started, Sal was in the room. We sat in a room, it was in the media center. And we started to go through all this. And it was a plan that was laid out in detail. And we said, where are, you were there.
Yeah.
No, Irene was, Irene was in the room. It was really robust and said, okay, here were the five major things that needed to get executed to get the strategic plan done. I can pull it up. There were a set of actions and we said, where is everybody with these things? And we stopped having the meetings after that. So I think the point is, we've had these things, and I agree with you, they need to be included. The bigger question we should probably ask at some point is, how did this fall out of the rhythm of the management system of it being the way that the business in the board and in the administration gets done?
Keep going, yes. So going forward, I think we, as a group, would like to make sure that we have alignment of large organizational goals, very clear metrics. And then having established those at a board level with collaboration with administration, then making sure that our strategies will actually move the needle on the very clear organizational goals. And then with the strategies in place, have mechanisms for you to progress monitor the actual plan as it moves forward with actual outcomes, not to the word activities. Not we will do PD, but what will happen as a result of the PD. Not we are going to work on a facilities plan, but we will have a complete plan that meets these rubric, this rubric. So overall concern that we discussed is, is that going forward, we would like to include these things in the next iteration. And then specifically, what are our goals, whether it's a five-year plan or not? What are the organizational goals and stay high level? And which I think is something Nick said and what you all expressed an interest in doing, is elevating the board's focus. What, we know that the vision of the graduate is a goal. Does that mean we want 100% of our children who graduate to demonstrate the, all of those capacities? What does that actually mean in a very specific statement? It's like the skill that we teach in ELA, close reading, not in parsing the words. But Mary has talked about...
Sorry, that was my bad.
No, I'm scared of that way. You know, Mary has talked about maybe what we want to talk about is something like, what percentage of children who actually graduate having achieved their personal success plan? So postgraduate outcomes, not necessarily measured by whatever the clearinghouse is collecting, but recognizing that perhaps two and four-year enrollment is not the path for everybody. So let's create the success plan, which we now need to do as a result of the state. And maybe what we say is, we as an organization are measuring our success that way. But what are the organizational goals in the context of staying high level and reflecting on changes in the environment, new information that we might have about what's important to the town and the board? Again, I've talked about the organization values. I think those would be helpful. And then considerations for the metrics. I think that, you know, much of this pain that we are having is when we establish organizational goals, just both conceptually and then very specifically, what, how are we going to demonstrate our success? What does that actually look like and how are we going to measure that? And using actionable metrics and things that we can actually report with fidelity. So the struggle of, can we actually collect the, consider that? Does, does improving this metric move us closer to our organizational roles?
I'm sorry, just define what we might actionable in this context.
I'm going to say FCAC membership.
Which is something we can have an impact on.
Yes, but that is actually something that we have unlimited ability to impact. Unless we said, the 45% of you who aren't doing sports, go find one. We have to improve, we have to increase the number of sports. I know it's very hard to get on a lot of those teams. So is that, right, is that...
It may not be actionable.
Right, exactly.
We count intermediaries.
Or you have...
There's a great assumption that we're shooting for 100. That in this whole conversation, there's a, there's a built-in assumption we're shooting for 100. We're not shooting for 100.
Yeah, and that's why you establish a goal within, right, what is the specific metric, what's the target?
No, but, but I think the point is in this case actionable, meaning something that we can actually impact.
Yes.
And there may be things that are nice, but maybe we don't really have that much control of that.
Exactly.
And therefore, is that something that we should be putting down as our goal?
Right, exactly. So will we. And as we consider metrics for the next iteration, are there new instruments or methodologies that weren't available five years ago that are today? Things that are research-based, like national benchmarks. I can, you know, mention a few that have come up. The state NGAI didn't exist. The state growth metric didn't exist. Social emotional learning, there have been significant improvements in how that can be measured and what dimensions can be measured that would actually reflect more about student well-being than, than... Right, extracurricular participation. We now have the state white paper on family engagement. And we have a lot of research on what that actually means and in what way that can directly support student achievement. So those are things to consider when you look at the goals and then consider what are the metrics. But if we can think about those when we are looking at the very top level creating this plan, that would make the subsequent reporting of our success on those metrics much cleaner, as well as if they give you an opportunity to progress monitor because we would have actual plans. These are some of the alternatives that have come up. And we are not in any way recommending any of these specifically right now, but just to consider what is possible. So, you know, postgraduate, that comes on the student well-being. You can see there's a number of very well-defined domains. There are several instruments. Grit is something that's very popular, maybe resilience, whatever you think is what we want to measure as student well-being. The interpersonal skills, community service is one aspect of that. Maybe we want to talk about relationship skills, social awareness, responsive decision-making that considers not just me, but the environment. We also now have the PSAT suite, which gives us growth ninth to 10th to 11th to the SAT. We didn't have that five years ago. So there's a lot of options here. For our climate for success, which I think is what we were going for when, and I wasn't in the room, but when you talk about satisfaction, that's in the room. These were, we would say these are coin satisfaction, but I think that we want satisfaction with all of these constituents to create a climate for success. If our, if our parents are feeling positive, if our faculty is feeling positive, if the students are feeling positive, then that just greases the skid. So one of the things under student well-being, a lot of research on connectedness with an adult. It doesn't have to be an extracurricular club, it doesn't have to be a party. It can be a librarian, just to show. It, it could be the cafeteria worker. But the important point is, do you have a connection with an adult over multiple years, right? So what could, if that was something we wanted to establish as a goal, what could we as an organization, what could be our strategy? What could we put in place structurally so that students could in fact have an opportunity? Whether they take it or not is another question, but to create the opportunities. And then specifically under parents, I know that Kim has thought a lot about, our engagement metric is...
Contact?
Frequency of contact. And thinking about elevating the goal, maybe it's not just frequency of contact, but what is the outcome of that contact? Do they feel respected, and I'm just quoting Kim here? Do they feel respected partners with, in the educational process? Do they feel empowered to actually facilitate their children, help their children, you know, in areas of weakness? So we could put plans in, you know, if that's something we want to work on, then you say, this is a goal. We want all of our parents to feel empowered as empowered partners. We want them to feel respected. That'll be a district-wide goal, that's something we can do. You know, we can say, this is a district-wide recommendation. The principals through ANE can deploy that. We could do, you know, regular progress checks on not just the outcome, but the actual plan. So that just brings us back to the summary, which is to say, out of these eight elements, and again, it can be organized several ways, but I think that what we've all agreed on is that so much of our pain is about having very clear goals, you know, which could be established right after the vision. And then what is the strategic objectives? And I'd like to change, I think, changing the language from organizational goals to strategic goals. Maybe separate those because I think we tend to conflict them. And then the, the annual plan that very clearly shows how we are going to achieve this and how you are going to be able to progress monitor. Because I know that we share your pain in not being able to report a progress monitor.
Mr. Sher.
Jen, I don't understand what you mean when you say so much of our pain. What are you talking about? No, 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 I, I... No, but you, I, I want to be clear. I'm asking the question because I don't want any, I don't want an assumption. Doesn't matter why I'm asking the question. If you can just answer the question, what is it you mean when you say pain? So much of our pain, you said that a couple of times?
Because I heard your frustration when Nick was here about, why can't we progress monitor? How do we use the dashboards to see where we are on intermediate points?
Okay, I don't, I guess in this context, I didn't see that as pain. But, okay, maybe others do. Yeah, yeah, fair enough, okay. That's what you mean?
Yes. Not defining anything, but one thing that leaps out at me and maybe it's in there, but to not lose sight of it is student stress. And we can say that part of student well-being is stress.
So part of our pain is that we want to provide you with the right information, right? And we have reported on updates of the strategic plan in many different ways across the past few years because we're trying to give you the right information you need to act on it and inform us on where we're going. And we believe we're going in the right direction, that the work is very meaningful and we see change in practice. So again, just trying to keep up with the reporting. And if you look back in the last four years, our strategic plan updates all look different. And we had each owned a different strategy that that was the direction that we were given and we did that work. You know, I owned curriculum instruction, it was a leadership one. And then Kim and Mary did SEL and engagement. And then there was the data dashboard, the data systems and information systems. And each year, we still owned that work and we would collaborate. But again, we're giving you a different way of how, you know, those updates. So we're always trying to anticipate what you want and what you need. Again, based on the questions you're asking, we want to give you what you need in order to make the decisions and help inform you. So it was important for us to take the moment, like you had shared with us at the last report, how do we plan to improve? We want to improve, but with the way things are designed and we were part of those conversations, some things may have to change as we go forward. I'll stop there. Many of the things that Jen had pointed out on our behalf, we were all in this conversation. She doesn't own this herself. But I do think, and as much as I had to report on it, the DSEP, the District Strategic Improvement Plan, we were reporting every year, but there was a clear, I mean, there was some structures put in place, a mid-course correction. We, there was data that we were collecting, a love-hate relationship, I suppose. But again, annually, it was just a different mechanism for reporting and understanding the different direction. So we want to be where you want to be and so that we can collaborate and that you trust us and the work that we're doing in our schools.
I'm one board member of eight. I have a very different idea of what we should be doing. Ralph said, the board's role is to focus on results, right? You said, tell us the results that you would like to see and let us do the work. All of the things that I have been listening to are subjective, not objective. I'm very, very concerned about the direction we're going. And this is not a good time of night to delve into it, but I want to dissent in the strongest possible way from carrying on in a direction where we don't have objective, measurable results.
I think some of this exercise though is telling us that there are probably objective measures out there. And as we move, tell me if I'm getting this right. As we move forward with the development of the next plan, we need to keep in mind that there may be ways to do that. Did I get that right, Jen?
Yeah, I don't understand what Jennifer, you were saying.
Well, hang on, Ms. Holson.
I think that...
I think that, I mean, I, I really appreciate, I'm one of eight, but I think I'm not the only one. I really appreciate all of this because I, it isn't just coming out of the ether. It's, there's actually, all the data, I mean, everything I've ever read talks about connectedness to an adult. And I think you're looking, delving a little bit deeper, like where, you know, where is this coming from? You know, how do we establish these? It's, it's the path to get there and where these, where these originally came from. Like, I don't think that, these aren't just words that you put on a board. I know that there was a lot of, I mean, I know that, I've read a lot of the research probably that the Cabinet here has read to get there. So I, I, I appreciate this and I think it actually, it's really informative.
Dr. Francis?
I think this is great and I hope we get a copy of it. I think, interestingly enough, my worlds are colliding and we're looking at this for my practice and I was reading, you know, about mission, vision, values. And we've got a consultant coming in to work on it because we're trying to change some cultural issues in our staff. So I think this very much parallels, and I think, as you said, this is something that crosses over all kinds of organizations. I, I don't, I'm not at the point right now where I'm, I think it's great to have examples, but we are way away, I think, from setting our new goals and new measurements and those things. So I don't feel the need to object to any specifics, because I don't think we're at that point where we're setting any of those things. To me, this was purely a way of saying, okay, as we move forward, here are the general things that we need to do, here are examples of ways that there's now measurements that maybe we didn't have before, these are things that we can do moving forward. But as I said, I am not prepared for us to be rushing into this, we are still living in the current one. But I think this is a nice reflection, given what we were talking about before, which is, okay, where are we, where are stumbling blocks with the ones we, one we have now? And, okay, here are some ideas of ways that we can potentially do this differently. And so I think, to me, one of the reasons, despite objections, of going through the process is in a way to understand our pain, right? I think if we don't understand our pain, then we don't understand what we need to fix. And I don't mean to assign blame, because I think it's evenly shared if we're going to do it. And I think that's not the purpose. The purpose is to understand where are stumbling blocks, what are the things that we need? How are we trying to figure out how to make what we've got better? So that the next time when we create the new one, we've reflected enough on the current one to do a better job. And I think, to me, this is, this is just a way to tie that in. And I'm not focusing on any specific example, except to understand, yeah, things can change and these are some points we should think about.
Ms. Sher.
Thank you. I think that some of the things we teach our kids is to persevere, to learn from past experiences, et cetera, et cetera. And this is a reflection, we've started a nice framework for future discussion. I love like a three-year plan as well. I think all my successful investments I went into had a three to five-year plan. And frankly, my three-year plan investments were, where I made more money. So I think you have really started to get us to start the conversation and I look forward to it. I'm sure we'll have a great discussion about all of these things that you threw up there. And I imagine we can add some along the way, but I really appreciate this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else on this?
Those are, is this the end?
Is it more?
No, these were the, a free to talk discussion.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the end, so. All right, so I think that the action for this superintendent was documentation of the existing dashboard, the goals, the action, I mean, all the rest of that. I want to thank you, Jen, for being forward-thinking, you know, it's a journey. Mr. Sher.
Given that this is our dashboard and these are our metrics, one thing we've never done is we've never published this. Can we take our dashboard and publish it on our website?
Well, so I'll, I'll tell you, I think what we should do is get the documentation for it. What we plan to do at the next meeting is take it up to vote on the rest of the tiles that lacked goals and stats. And at that point, then, we could put it up on the dashboard. There's the, there's a general district tab already that has some information on that. That may be the best place. All right, anything else on this? Up, Dr. Francis.
Only that, I wasn't, Irene, did you have other things that you wanted to talk about? It sounded like, or we covered what you wanted. I didn't want, I didn't want not to get the opportunity.
No, I, I appreciate the open conversation and just hope it continues as we look towards the future. It's Jen, so we have 18 months to work through this. And I just hope that the message is getting through and that you see evidence of our work despite the frustrations in the classrooms and with our students.
All right, Dr. Francis, you have a question?
It's a journey.
All those in favor? Yours, Erin, thank you.